Alright. Good evening, everyone, and welcome back to our first community of the whole community development meeting. Sorry, committee of the whole community development meeting as at twenty twenty four. Today is February fifth, twenty twenty four, and we're meeting at the South that is the community center. I'd like to call this meeting order. First off, I'd like to have approval of the agenda. Do I have a move? You by Councilor Smith, a second. You know, so I did by Deputy Mayor now. Oh, I was. Process wrong. I thought we then asked if there's any adjustments we made that point. I got it backwards. I got it backwards. Yeah. Now it's more complicated. No, no. So on the agenda, one of the things we did have to talk about is based on we have a fairly large crowd here. I'll talk about actually six C or six E pardon me, which is discussion discharge of firearms. So we do want to move that up to become six A and then everything else will follow down and so six A B etc. So if any objection to that, or if that's okay.
Do you need motion to amend or are we good?
Please chair for this. You either do or ask the vendor.
Let's just stick procedure right. I'll just go motion motion to amend as what you said. I just need some of the second. So I'm in the one councilor's mail. Okay, so I call question on the amendment there. All in favor? Okay, and now I'll call the question on that as agenda as amended. Okay, all in favor? Hey, alright, great. Okay, so. Thank you. So let's see here. So let's go with that. So now just to move on to number three. Is there anybody anybody have any disclosure pecuniary interests or conflict of interest or the general nature thereof?
I have not declared a conflict of interest and I I don't think I will. I understand the the discussion about the discharge of firearms involves directly behind my house. But I I don't think I'm in conflict. I think I'm not developing like there's no pecuniary interests in this. For me, I don't benefit from it in in any way. But if I feel in the course of the conversation that I'm in conflict, then I'll declare that and I'll step away. But at this point, I don't see the need to step away. But I want to make it known that it is directly, it's part of my theoretically, I think it's part of my backyard as well. So.
So loaded. Alright, nobody else had any? That's good. So then moving on to number four, business arriving from previous committee, mean it made community, a committee meeting minutes. From November sixth, twenty twenty three, does anybody have any? It's been about a day today. On here. Okay, great. So then moving on to delegations and presentations. We have two delegations. Just to speak on the delegations themselves, please note there is a limit of a talk time of about ten minutes. And because of a lot of stuff on the agenda, I'm actually going to set a timer. It'll be, you'll hear, we're not going to kick you off right away and pull the. Get the cane to pull you off the stage right away, but we will, we will know that that's the time that we really have to start wrapping it up if we hit that point. So. Just so we're all aware. So then five A is it's basically Vladimir Hughes and Monica Vance on behalf of Speska Holdings. Talking about the laneway easement for twenty nine nine Dundas Street. Oh, yeah.
Thank you for your presence on this. I know that we have sort of plans as to discuss the options for this easement. I did want to bring up a few points about the building that perhaps may have been missed. Being part of this construction project since September, I've gotten a lot of locals, so I've gotten a lot of inside information on the building, the history and everything. One of the things regarding our business, our industry, distribution of medical supplies and. That laneway originally, the previous owner verbally told us that it was part of property. So we didn't think anything about it. It wasn't a big issue once we found out it wasn't part of property. Well, purchase could be with the intent for deliveries to go in and out. Having deliveries go in and out of the front of the building is just very problematic. Because we we do a large campaign, it's a online business. And having that a door is an essential part of the business. And if we don't have access to it, then it's 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 problematic. We don't over. Second part is sometimes my understanding in the nineties, they built a four slope roof on that building. And they gave, it's not to give permission, but their adult was permitted, but it's there nevertheless. With a four slope building, with a four slope roof like that, you can actually butt up a building to it. Because if you do, then you're going to get water runoff and it's going to cause damages to both buildings. And it's actually causing damage to our buildings. We have to put down those standards because there's none there right now. So we did the full full facade on the inside, on the outside and everything. And we were having bar actually leave the side of the building on the foundation. Yes. So in the break time, we're going to bring others. All sorts of different. You know, measures to control the water. But having a building butted up next to it will be problematic for the owners. So even with that argument of potential development in the future. They would not actually develop it based on the design of the current building. It's so that's something interesting to get a consideration. Also, the history of that laneway from what I was talking locals and people I've worked with on site is that that laneway has been there since, I think, even from the next importance. It used to be a wooden floor block that led to a library in the back. And it's been part of the whole, the way it's been designed. Again, this information I'm getting from people from locals, but it's it's always been a language. It's it hasn't natural gas lines still underneath it from what I was told from the the league director committee. And, yeah, it's it's just, it's just part of it. And I don't know if you can see the media that was there, but the media itself, you can see that it it was never kept. Even the previous owners, they put dumpsters on it and it was overgrown. When I spoke to the Parks and Recreation guys, they said they would never instructed to maintain it, even though it isn't part of that lot. It wasn't kept and it was overgrown. It was still the trash and we cleaned it up. And we're basically just using a third construction side of it, but it's. It it's it's really, if it's not our language, it's not our responsibility. We're maintaining it anyway. We plan on maintaining it because that's the way it's designed. Tree line, it's separated completely. So those are the only points I wanted to bring up because I know we're going to discuss different options in the future, but something to think about during discussions of. That's all.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your question is fine maybe before it goes away. Is, do you have a, like, what's your preference?
Which is the solution?
Yeah.
A permanent easement, so we doesn't security. So we don't, we put the order at door and already permission from the township. And we spent enormous amount of money putting that in. It's in. And now we may not have access to it, which is a huge problem too, because you have to spend the money, put it in, permitted. And to answer your question, a permanent easement would be the best solution. But we're also open to options, et cetera. So.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? We're going to have a discussion on it later on this one. Tell the agenda for that. So, okay, thank you very much. You appreciate that. Thank you. Alright, that's good. Thank you again Vladimir and Monica. Moving on to five B now, we have Pat Tierney, who's going to talk about concerns regarding goose hunting practices. Basically to the east of Cardinal, essentially. We're only to roll this. We can see it that you. It's not full screen. If you press F five, it does that, but it sometimes doesn't go to the right screen, but. Just behead, just so everybody's aware of council here in committee, I guess. There was a, the tablet was also sent to us moments ago as well. So we have to copy and re-balance this. This does. Yep. Okay, whenever you're ready, feel free to say.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, I'm Pat Tierney. I'm here with some other residents of Solomon Creek, subdivision. Subdivision is located just east of Cardinal. And it's spelled on the north by town to go to the south. So I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to explain further the concerns that we send out to Mayor Torio and Councilor Martell on January fifteenth. Concerning the downtowns or loose zones we were staying in those newer residences. I hope we had a good opportunity when we moved in court, we feel important. So the presentation is earlier to that and we're here really to request an act, an act of some vital law or some kind of demonstration. Legislation restricting use of firearms in areas close to residential properties. The photo here does show where the incidents took place here. And although we're addressing this area specifically, there's also other areas I'm sure which are negatively effective. Including down by the cardinal region and fall parks near me and any other locations for recreation. That has hunted most likely. So I mentioned the document that was forwarded on the thirteenth of January describes some of the events that took place in December. Hunter for discharge and shotguns in the area just south of the scallop now. And they were actually hunting in the east, which is a legal activity. This area is a strip of land that's actually an extension of down the street that comes down and is down on one side by the dog and now on the other side by the. At the time on December twenty third, a seriously moving goose stalk into the backyard of eight plus she. Weeding and walking around. Unfortunately, children were present, so it was a little bit of a family situation. But one of the adults did go out and rehearse, rehearse battle between banquet or somebody presumably in the black. Other residents were also alarmed by hearing gunshots close by and as well as moving birds hooting out of the river. Later on, it was shifted for Christmas twenty three of December, someone taking advantage of the nice weather and went for a stroll along the gallop now. Going to find blood and saliva locations. Again, not very pleasant experience for people. The distance from the hunters' location for our homes is about a hundred meters, just moving on here without those. Or not even occurred on December twenty eighth. At that time, the O P P were called. They did come on site. They came to visit some of the residents from the also likes to talk of the hunters and look at the vehicle, but they were unable to do anything because it's actually no laws involved. This area away down the important much new spot for recreation. On a clear winter's day, you can see fish and lots of blue livers. Sometimes many of the children test along with the family to enjoy this boy. On the north side of the canal, it's all no pre-presidents and the other people living on our family go to maintain that area of. Or grass coming in the water, you know, so the south side was maintained by the township. It was cleaned up a few years ago and the grass is now very, very. Possibly the initial by the township recreation, maybe to have some areas made as recreational. Back and from the south. So the area is very busy and unfortunately the other COVID got really busy. One people were home and that's continued over since. It's used for exercise and people walking down and they take exercise mission and are walking. And clears one diet. He comes four times a day. And he was here in Cardinal. And with respect to the dogs, we all, it was also a health concern with the transmission of lethal flu. Truth that's finding a bit east in the blood. So it was a little bit of an upsetting situation. So we looked into regulations and we found that really there's no federal or provincial regulations restricting the discharge of firearms. While I can also include issues licenses and regulations to game hunting, which includes switching can be hunted and what you obviously these are. For Canada East, it's September twenty third, December twenty seventh and January twenty fourth, March to seventh. There is some exceptions depending on the municipalities allows them to be hunting or not. We couldn't find anything about Cardinal which can be allowed to be hunted or not. If it is prepared, then the hunters were after them violation because they were hunting within forty eight and season ended on a from so. Blue form. The Ontario government issued licenses which include regulations stating no discharge of firearms across any right of way or on another pool of water, which would include this inherent. And potentially doubt now. But it's left to municipality to decide how close that we apply. The information we received from the township earlier indicates right now there's no restrictions in those. We also found under municipal powers, as the statute municipal powers help safety and nuisance. Which has a clause that says local municipality may, for the purpose of public safety, prohibit or regulate the discharge of guns or other firearms, air guns, firearms, pro sports, etc. Within maybe this is an area that the township could locate further as an alternative to creating a specific bylaw. One example, we found another municipality, what they have in this kind of situations, the field of battle. Male by law states no person should always charge a firearm within four hundred fifty meters of the land on a registered island or subdivision. In the case we're looking at, we're about a hundred, hundred and five meters from our country.
I have a copy of the. Talking about fire now here.
The fourth by law excludes people like the lawn course and the farmers and gone across now. So now that we're talking about a hundred and five meters in our case. And some of our research found it's like twenty two hundred, like a range of ninety two to a hundred and thirty seven meters with a potential of two hundred and seventy five so. And of course. Keeping in mind the city of Ottawa, then that the areas in the four hundred and fifty meters to circle and guide them. You know, uses that as a just as an idea of how might we use that within the community. This type of restriction can easily protect residences and as recreational areas from being affected by hunting. And or use of firearms for any other reason. We're also concerned that hunting in our area will increase. Statistics show that while early hunting has become increasingly popular. For example, turkey hunting and tobacco business significantly by over five hundred percent in the last ten years. And we're probably all aware that key something is also on the rise prior to the government initiatives to call the birds on the sea. So we believe this combined with the heightened interest in sport may lead to more and more of these that raise the increase in our area. So to summarize, we find the current situation requires some change. The discharge of firearms close to residential areas is a significant safety concern, especially as per our recreation activities take place. We're killing the meaning of wildlife in theory of residence, including children is distressing. Facts and need. And as mentioned in dead cars, there's a wealth of death of this for the families. So basically, we're asking the council to find a local solution to the problem. To protect those of us enjoying recreation as well as allow the hunters to pursue their sport in certain areas. There's many areas of being township, I'm still waiting to come to. Move on top of whatever you brought. So the document have already contains the names now versus those of us involved in the issue of the presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Um, we would like, yeah, we could, we could do this part. Yeah, well, because we can't ask them directly, they're on the more right debating, so.
I have, I just have a couple, Pat, okay? The, you called the O P P. The O P P came.
Yes.
No charges, no, did they come back to and give you any information at all?
They did not. Which was a question. They, I was one person that called and they came to my house. I explained to them what was going on. Don't have a police go there and it was go to. They took all the information and then they went down and now the scene was speaking with the hunters. So they all looked at the vehicle. They were in their vehicle and then they were done. They never reached out and called back.
I, excuse me, I called too. I'm running on the twenty third, but I waited to call because they were there at five o'clock. And there were like flashlights everywhere and I thought because of previous experience, there was drugs got going. So I waited and I stayed up and then the shooting happened and the police came.
Yeah. But no, but no, they didn't issue, they weren't discharging from their perspective, anything in a illegal way or anything like that that we know of.
No, no.
Okay.
They never called back to say anything, but they did. It was flash and yeah, and then shooting zoom, you know, lay after. So I was so.
Did you, did you happen to notice they were outfitters?
I'm sorry?
Like, was it a small business? Was it an outfitter? You know, like a, a business owner who brings in people from, say, the United States or from somewhere else to, to actually do the hunt? Did you notice?
Yeah, it was a one block pickup truck, quite large and they, they had a some kind of a roll down of a kind of a. Tidy the truck, back of the truck and a lot of those three, four, five, five. Now, one person believed they saw the vehicle of the L C D on Alpha that and they believe it would have. Now, the police that were there obviously would have any permission. And search the vehicle like you, you know.
And so the last one that I'll say is that I've been there. I think we're in our eleventh year. And this year was definitely different, for sure. Have you noticed it in other years?
Yes, I've been there for almost twenty years and there's been two incidences where it was in the spring. And there were people in boats in the cannot shooting. And I was sitting on my deck and I could see this flame coming out and thinking like, oh, but and I don't know what they were doing, what they were shooting. That was too late, but it didn't go on and on. Yeah, but it has happened, yes.
Yeah, okay. I, other than debate, I think I'm.
So they go and they shoot and they get on their little canoe and they call to the goose and every goose is still alive or they're killing it. I mean, you see, you see it all, you know, there. It's not, it's not.
Uh, Councilor Smith, you have any questions or?
Uh, no, I'm just gonna plug on. So it's good. Mr. Happy there?
I, I just have one, well, I, I can feel for you guys. I, I, I live down on the Saint Lawrence here. And Christmas Eve, I jumped into my chair too, the same thing there earlier on the island. And I, I agree with the, with the mayor, this is probably the busiest season I recall for. Outfitters using our area for some reason. I have no idea, but it has. But getting to that, you said that it happened December twenty third, December twenty eighth, you phone O P P again. And nothing was done. There was no charges. But there should have been a charge of hunting at a season because the season ended December twenty seven.
I know.
So I'm not, I don't.
Whether they be well side, you know, about no, no, this is information we found out in our research or this presentation.
Yeah, I just, you know, with that window, there should have been a charge for hunting at a season.
Some municipalities proved down something, some, those municipalities, they say to me. So I've had some confusion amongst the, maybe about this particularly municipality.
Right. That's all.
Want to ask a question just to have and pick them on the spot, but we don't have any bylaws to hunting in the township, do we? Right, so you can, if there isn't a bylaw to prevent hunting on a Sunday, you can hunt on Sunday.
Right.
Yeah, could you? Yeah, okay.
And if you ask the resident, it's only come more popular because first of all, the sports take on the more popular and the government conversion. Which makes sense for a lot of reasons, but not very close to the house.
Yeah, sorry, we, hello, sorry. Uh, sorry, we have to have one meeting and then we have to have, I have to be the one to talk to us, but that's unfortunate. That's okay. No problem. It's just a matter of process. So. Uh, Mr. Ross, Mr. Murray, do you have any comments? Uh, just, just a clarification. So after the police left the scene, did the hunt continue or was the hunt done?
Oh, no, it just continued right on.
So we're.
They probably have thirty pieces in the bottom of the truck at least.
So, and again, I have to apologize. It is has to be Pat. Thank you. Yep, okay. Uh, and I, actually, the questions that I wrote down over this process all got asked already, so I don't have any other questions. I was gonna ask a bit about the Sunday rules with township and then also what the, even though it was the twenty eighth, what the police have done. So they had done nothing. They didn't get back to you and all that. So that's, that's fair. I have what I'm looking for as well. So I appreciate your time. We're gonna have a discussion, actually, a following discussion essentially right now. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate that. I'll just wait to make sure that we're still doing all the ready products stuff for continued. Six. Yeah, zero petition. What's that? Sorry? Yes, okay. I don't know. There is one. I, I have definitely. I definitely. Yep, yeah, we need to get you. Yep, sounds good. So. Right. Good, good. But what on that, we're just taking a recess. What do you think? A recess for now until we get this rebooted as soon as. Yeah, we're in recess right now, everybody. Just we're all ready. Technical problem. We lost the TV? Oh, well, I was gonna just bring it back and. Okay, we don't, we didn't see it, but we don't.
We have the petition.
I think everybody.
But where is?
It's in council. I sent him to see it. But I, anything I received, I say.
Yeah, yeah, but we didn't see the action.
It's got, it's got everything.
Wait, not so quick. Be very, I've been very quick, shut.
I, well. I can, just some people. Okay, so, okay, so we're, we get back on track. They're trying to, we did you that, right? So we'll pick up the meeting now anyways where we left off. So. Okay, so we're gonna move on now to to section six, the new A, which is the amended A part of me, which is a discussion on discharge of firearms. I will remind the gallery though as well that we are, so this meeting is about a, about a committee discussion. It does, does not involve conversation with you guys who would listen to this conversation, of course. And if you have questions, at the very end of the agenda, we have a, a question period where you can ask questions that is going to be brought up. So just so we're all aware. So as I said, we're gonna move on to six A now, discussion on, on the discharge of firearms. So, alright. I don't think we need an introduction on this topic. I think we pretty much started with introduction of the topic already. Thank you very much for that. Makes it a little easier for us to, to have this conversation. So where do we start? Mister, Mister Smale, Councilor Smale, did you have anything you want to start off with or do you wanna?
I'm ready to, well, I'm gonna consider if they got a whole bunch of notes.
Okay. Mister Merritt, who's up?
Look at the conversation play.
Mister Deputy Mayor?
No, I mean, I, I, it's, it's a tough situation. I understand where the people that. It's in flight subdivision is going through. Like I said, I'm, I'm right across the number two highway. We're all going through makes the dogs bark and so on and so forth. I, I just myself, I'm, I'm hoping we, we don't have to make a bylaw. I'm hoping that we can maybe work with the police and the, and the, and the ministry of natural resources. On this, you know, I, I just hate to see it at a municipality level when. On this, um, you know, I, it, I just hate to see it at a municipality level, when. Maybe with the little education of, of the hunters and moving further away. Would fix this, I mean, the noise of a, of a twelve gun, twelve gauge shotgun. Is loud, it doesn't matter, I, I wouldn't even know how far it would go, you know, so, by saying. Moving them further. East towards air clock. Is probably not an option, because you're still gonna hear, you're still gonna get, uh, maybe not, uh, really goose, but. You're still gonna hear the shooting, uh, you may not see everything that you, that you're here. That you see, but you're gonna he- hear and see quite a lot too, so, I, my, my, like I said, I. I'm all, I'm open for discussion, but I hope we don't have to get into a bylaw within. Municipality, can't work with that, Ministry of Natural Resources and OPP, so.
Well, I'm gonna echo a little bit with the deputy mayor, so. You know, I can certainly understand that, I'm not a hunter. I can certainly understand that, you know, a non-hunter would not like to see this, and I can appreciate that, I wouldn't want my kids or my grandchildren seeing that either. But we, the OPP could not enforce any laws, because no laws were broken, you know, so. Where do we, as, as the bottom tier municipality, do we want to overwrite the, you know, provincial laws and federal laws of hunting, and how do we, how do we enforce that? Does our bylaw, right, enforce that, does OPP enforce that? I think we need to, uh, we need to get some more info and some more. Some more, uh, facts on this, to see maybe what best practices in other areas, it's can be the only area this has had. I just am uncomfortable trying to set a standard that we may struggle to maintain.
No, we're not, we're not, unfortunately, so, so it's just, it's just, it's processes procedurally at that moment, so. Uh, Mister Red, do you want me to speak a little bit to this, or do you have, uh, ready to tell now?
I. I'm so conflicted, I. What I, maybe, like, one of the things that, that, you know, it, it would be nice to get, and I'm assuming from the OPP or, or something. Uh, sort of what historically this looks like, not just this year, but, but I think, uh, you know, what's been the history over, over next number of years, for instance, as well. Um, and I'd love to see if you get, if, if hopefully they've kept a record of what happened on the twenty eighth, because. It'd be nice to know what, what happened there, um, and, and why that was, they didn't pursue anything on the twenty eighth, which was outside of hunting season, so that's, that's a curiosity that I have, that I think. All, the only answer we could get would be coming from them, if they took a record, to be honest, I think. Um, so, I, I worry better with that, um, and, you know, it'd be nice to see also, uh, and this is not with OPP, but. Uh, what happens in other similar areas along, along the Saint Lawrence, for instance, as well, other townships, and how do they approach this, um. Especially as they get into their, into their, um, their more urban areas, as opposed to the rural areas, you know, like, you're, you know, I have a. Sixty acre property in the middle of the township, and, you know, I let hunters go on the backyard, because it's not a deal for me. Um, but it's also deer season, they don't usually hunt geese back there, so it's not like it's, you know, near Christmas when the kids are off and things like that, and, uh. And again, it's not a very popular area, so, so I have a different. You know, experience to it, but I can appreciate the, uh, the, the fear, for sure. Um, and, uh, what else, that's, that's kind of the notes that I took, was, was that, um, oh, and, and. I'm not sure that we can get the answer as well here today, I mean, I think it's a broad topic, but, uh, I don't know what powers, um. Uh, we have at the township level to make, to just, if we wanted to make any changes, what we, what we could do, what that would look like, if you would enforce it to, uh, council market house points. Um, as well as, uh, um. Well, like, who would enforce it, and also, you know, what would make the most sense, uh, from a staff perspective as well, on how we manage it, so. That's kind of where I, where I was making comments on, making notes on, so. Well, no, I'm, I'm trying to stay out of it as much as I can to not influence it, because it is my backyard, so. I, like, it's. I'll ask that, it's not our land, right?
Yes, uh, so through the chair, the land right above the water is not owned by private systems, nor the municipality. Is owned by OPT and power power, interior power generation.
That, that, again, sorry, that's. It's suburban, I can go, yeah.
Yeah, we do not have jurisdiction over that, nor do we have jurisdiction on the water. So it would make it more difficult for us to actually.
So, it's, 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 it's not even within the, within the boundaries of, of the township, or areas within the boundaries.
In the boundaries of the township, but the water is not.
Right.
There's so many. Weird spots to this discussion, because I think. If I'm not mistaken, a small piece of it might even be South Nation Conservation.
Through the channel, there is areas that South Nation Conservation would be involved as well, yes, the majority of it is.
So, uh, for me, it would be. Like, considering Ottawa and considering Cardinal, I don't, they're, they're not, I understand the bylaw would stop the same. Action from happening, but Cardinal's not Ottawa, I, I get that. But it is very close to where we live, for sure. Um, I think from my standpoint, it's all about making decisions within the right information front. So, it, there's no way that I would agree to create a. A bylaw on a complaint, I mean, we get complaints all the time. But I would consider it, if we had input from the OPP. If we had input from Ministry of Natural Resources, if we had the input from Ontario Power Group, to their land. Um. If we had input from South Nation Conservation Authority, I think it's a federally navigated waterway as well. So, I don't know if that's RCMP jurisdiction, or exactly how that works. When it comes to firearms on waterways that are federally navigated, I'm not sure. But I think every one of those has, has an ability to weigh in on this discussion. To help us form our decision. I, I understand that. Urban, you know, as the town grows, becomes more urban. That it certainly puts pressures on rural ways of life, and they, those things collide, and we have to. We do have to manage and deal that to the best of our. Ability, but without more information from all the agencies that should be giving us information. Um, I s- I couldn't, you know, do a bylaw without that, I wouldn't, wouldn't be doing my job properly if I, if I did that, but there. Without that, the reason I, you know, really didn't want to speak is because I don't want to, if there isn't support at the table among the group to move forward. With a bylaw, then we'd be wasting a lot, you know, potentially a lot of time, and, you know, time is valuable for staff, and I don't really want to waste. Staff time doing something, so, if it's not gonna be supported, but I wouldn't vote for creating a bylaw, unless I had the information that I need.
And through the chair, through someone at this table, do we call. Cormorants in that area at all?
I can answer that, yes.
So, we, you know, we're. How did former areas to say it, we can't suck and bowl at the same time, we can't tell people you can't cheat at these here, but we're paying someone to shoot cormorants.
John, John, I can speak to this, I mean, I, John cut a roost tree down there. Um, uh, it was, you know, directly across from, it's close to the area where we're, we're talking about, it's about where their truck was parked. Um, there was an old roost tree where the cormorant sat. Um, I don't know that John has had to. Hunt the area for cormorants in some time, he certainly managed. The flock that, that was there, well, there's more to South Dundas side, but, but there isn't, um. Really aren't too many there now. A good point, that's a good point. Do we know, and I know we don't, but, but I think it had a piece of information, I have, I have written down, I forgot to ask. Um, to the, you know, we have Prescott, obviously, I don't think Prescott allows hunting in their waterfront. Um. Do we know if Augusta does, or, or if South Dundas has a bylaw on place, we can be. Sort of congruent, I didn't do any research on that, so.
I can, there's South Dundas, because I camp down there. And September she could.
Same thing.
Yeah. On the islands, yeah, so.
It may not be a reference point that we can look at with reference, but what has been, uh. Put into bylaw since in other counties, but, or the townships, by the way, so. Uh, okay, um, anything from the, this is the end, or I've really got a lot to add, this looks not like a partner.
So many geese, and everybody we talked to. Are in favor of hunters. I don't goose hunter duck, I did in the seventies, along the river, in Johnstone, I do, and I've never gotten a claim, but, most hunters. I don't know, none of you guys have anything to do, uh, shotgun will reach one hundred yards. Uh, as for wounded geese, they probably aren't using them. What I understand, it might have been a outfitter that was there, so they're probably using the proper bullets or shells, in the shotgun shell. Wounded geese happen all the time, so the ducks don't usually make it as far as people's property. Uh, I would not want to see my grandson find a, have somebody shake his neck, whatever, whatever, I found him. But, uh, I'm not saying too much, because like I said, I am a hunter, and I live just up. Near, uh. Where the high rise buildings, uh, so I hear the duck just, uh, I have geese laying over my house. Dropping everything, they're tearing into body on my roof, apparently, but, uh. Like, I feel sorry for you. I, I remember you just going on a child, you know, you, you'd never seen it, but then when I grew up, because my twins, everyone was talking along the river.
Yeah.
Everyone, and now there's not very many hunters, and the geese are, like, we have a potential problem down at the Legion Parkway. But it's a beast, you can't walk there with more geese, droppers than there is anything, more grass, you know, but. It's less like Tori, that Merrick said, to get more information from everybody else, and, you know, sway my mind. I know I've caught a lot of her, please, I, I don't know what to do, where to go.
So, this is sort of pulling the table, then, do we want, uh, uh, staff to, to look into some of these points we've mentioned, these points we've mentioned, pardon me, and while there's no. I, I'm certainly in favor of getting more information. Um, I, I certainly, I think, I think in my mind. The, the re- the right answer for me, and I, I really, I've said this to anyone that has listened to me, I don't like it. Right, I mean, it scares the hell out of our dogs, it, it's our child, it wakes you up in the morning. But it doesn't make it illegal, and I chose to buy it, I was there knowing that that was. That that was okay, and that's where I ended up sort of conflicted, I'm not a hunter. Um. You know, I, but I understand and I respect the right to do it. But I also understand that Cardinal's grown, it's a subdivision, it's close. I'd love to hear what OPG has to say, I'd love to see what the Ministry of Natural Resources says about the proximity. Um. You know, whether, whether it loops landed on somebody's deck, to me, I understand that that's a traumatic. You know, issue, and, and sort of is probably what brought that, brought the group here. But to me, it's, it's not, like, that one brought it to a head. But it's been going on for a while, and, you know, the, the town's growing out, and it's sort of starting to overtake that, that little area. And we probably do need some, some guidance as to what is the right thing to do, I mean, residents are here voicing their concerns today, and that's. Fantastic, I don't like it either, I'm stuck between, you know, rural roots and building rights, and I think I'd like. More information from the folks in the agencies that should be, otherwise, voting no, so.
Uh, what year was the subdivision? It's like twenty years ago, it's off, well, it's like, how long have people lived there?
Plan subdivision, that's in around two thousand, two thousand and one. It's in and around that time.
So. Our subdivision, uh, to the chair to the CEO, was there complaints before about it, like? Oh, I, because I know, just the east or west of you people along the river.
We can have, we have our, getting a look at complaints, I'm sure. Uh, Mister Deputy Mayor, do you have anything?
Well, there's no danger of getting more information, if you're homeless, or, or I'm gonna have a hard time voting on something that supersede provincial and federal laws.
Okay, uh, so I think staff, you got some direction there, you feel, but, okay, good, all right, so, uh, this is anything else? We'll move on to, uh, uh, six B. Um, just, just a question, uh, on procedure, because there is a, a bird here. Um, that probably wants more, more follow up and more inserts to, to those questions, so. When we get more information, we'll add it to an agenda. Okay, and, and with that, can we just, is there a way that, I mean, I'll know that it's on there, and I'll be able to contact, you know, Pat, and. You know, maybe that, do that through the group, but is there a way that staff can also send that information to them, so that they have part of it when it goes out as the package? That way, everybody's got a good, good handle on it, thank you. Well, I think we got, we got, we got the. All right, uh, okay, so moving on to six. Yeah, so, yeah, so, uh, I mean, uh, like I said, there was a question period at the end of, at the end of the meeting itself, if you want to stay and ask questions. Um, otherwise, nobody's gonna hold you here, so if we want, they are, no problem, thank you very much. Thank you all for your concern and for coming to me.
Yes, thank you.
We appreciate you. Okay, so, moving on to six B, uh. Liv, Liv, which is land use planning, uh, number one, we actually have Brittany Mulhern here, uh, from, uh, from Forten, Forten. She's a senior planner there, uh, and we're talking about the consent policy review, uh, pure specific, pure review of hydro geimplication. Wendy, fresh back from vacation, this must be right on, you thought of it all a long time ago, I'm sure. So, what are you, what is favorite discussion? We probably needed that, okay. Um, all right, so. Yes, perfect, yes, that was good. Um, I, sorry, just to make sure, Brittany, can you hear us okay there, by the way?
I can, thank you, Wendy's a bit muffled, but, um, I can still roughly hear her, uh, you guys are very clear, thank you. I can, thank you, Wendy's a bit muffled, but um, I can still roughly hear her, uh, you guys are very clear, thank you.
All right, yes, sorry.
So staff engages themselves with Forten to review the draft of policy document. I'm not Brittany Mulhern here, uh, to rent the professional player and consult with Forten planning, join us tonight to share her review of the policy document. Brittany is uniquely qualified to comment on the policy in a previous law as we knew the whole plan for regional aids. So she brings perspective for both the private and the public sector, so I'm gonna pause there, I have a recommendation to the staff corp, I'm gonna give. Brittany a chance to share with her her view of the nation.
Perfect, okay, Brittany.
Uh, thank you, committee, um, so I just have a, just an overview of my, uh, my findings. If you'd like, I can just, uh, go through that, uh, rather quickly, if you'd prefer.
I think we've all read it as well, I think probably quickly is probably beneficial for yourself as well, and, uh. All seen it as well, so we can probably ask questions, do it as well during the conversation.
Certainly, yeah, I can certainly summarize very quickly, uh, ultimately, I was asked to review two questions. Um, first of all, would the policy meet provincial requirements if applicable to only lots of under, uh, zero point four hectares rather than one hectare? And ultimately, my answer to that is no, I do do not suggest that it would meet the provincial requirements. As a result of the ministry's D series guidelines, specifically the D five four, which relates to onsite sewage systems. Um, ultimately, I also discussed with the Ministry of Environment Conservation and Parks, as I understand that they commented on the previous, uh. Uh, policy when it was drafted, as well as the official plan amendment. And, uh, I I also understand that based on their comments, there might have been some confusion in terms of what they were, um. Uh, looking at in terms of whether or not it was zero point four hectares, or if it's one hectare, so I did get some clarification from them. And, uh, they they were very clear that they would not support any lot being created of the under zero point four hectares typically. But any lot created under one hectare, they may support, provided it had a supportive hydro geological assessment. So to provide a very quick answer to question one, I do not believe that it would meet provincial requirements. If it was reduced to only under zero point four hectares to require a hydro geological assessment. My recommendation ultimately is to require it for anything under one hectare. The second question related to alternative processes. Um, specifically, are there any alternative processes that would not require a hydro geological and train assessment for lots of under one hectare? So I actually, um, a- as Wendy, uh, appropriately noted, my experience at Rita Lakes, uh, made me a very good fit, in my opinion, for this review. Because I did try to search out different, um, ideas when I was at Rita Lakes. And ultimately, we did implement an approach that was passed, um, informally through a, an informal policy by council. But what we found was that policy really wasn't very descriptive in practice, once we were trying to implement it at the township. And as a result, staff implemented kind of a secondary process to answer how you do that process. And what we ultimately found is that. I I don't recommend the alternative process route, it's not clear, it's staff intensive. And ultimately, at the end of the day, the developer may still require that hydro geological assessment by hydro geologist. So is it going to take more time? Likely, is it still going to likely require a hydro geologist to weigh in and the cost would? Also be included, yes, so my recommendation ultimately is to implement the policy that staff have suggested. As is in terms of having that level of hydro geological assessment for lots created under one hectare. So it's a very quick and dirty overview of my report, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Good, and and Debbie, we appreciate the experience because, of course, uh, we've certainly cited, uh, the example for Rita Lakes, to be honest, in a few of our, our conversations. So, uh, it was actually really good to get, uh, you in front of us as well for for that aspect of it as well. So, uh, having said that, I will put it up to the, uh, to the floor, do we have any questions? Do you want to say something already? Okay, fair enough, uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor, yourself?
Uh, yes, I just have one, can I? Can a licensed well technician do sort of like a mini? Hydro.
So ultimately, licensed well technician, um, they they can, of course, drill the wells. Um, however, there are certain well technicians that are also licensed to do water quality analysis, um, mainly do the sampling of the water quality. So I have found that there's a, there's a couple, um, that can do water quality sampling, and that's what that one component of the Rita Lakes example. That was to illustrate. And what they can do is they can do the sampling, and they can do the six hour pump test to get the samples. But then they have to take it to the lab that does the analyzing and figure out what, you know, what kind of, uh, components are in that water, water supply. But the issue is that they can't typically go to that next level, um, and make specific recommendations. So while some of the well technicians are able to say, hey, you know, y- your sodium's a bit high, you might require, you know, a certain level of, uh, treatment system. Uh, compared to others, um, if there is other issues that are a bit more complicated, they can't comment on it, they're not qualified to do so. That's where a hydro geologist would have to come in in some aspect, maybe that's if the township had one on retainer. Or if, um, the ministry would be able to provide comment, which again is why it's a bit more unclear in that route.
Thank you. Uh, no, I think I'm gonna lose this one.
Well, it was a well. Mister Mayor, skip me for a second, okay?
Well, as for me, uh. Brittany, I I read the whole thing this afternoon, and while I was reading, I got thinking, holy cow, when we just tell us the answer, like I'm getting, it was so much, and then. In five minutes, just thought what we could do, but we can't. But, yeah. So I gotta say it.
Mister Mayor, do you want the last word, or you'll be the last word? Okay, so, so our goal, uh, I mean, right, as as this group was to create one acre lots in the rural, in the rural area. Do you do that in Rita Lakes?
Yeah, so the Rita Lakes lot size has traditionally been one acre minimum. Uh, that's been in place since, uh, the original official plan for the township of Rita Lakes, which I believe was two thousand and four. Um, and then when the township updated, uh, their official plan a couple of years ago, I think we did it twenty twenty two. Um, the lot size was maintained at the one acre, but the requirement for the hydro geological assessment was spelled out in in, um. In terms of lot size.
So pre twenty twenty two, it wasn't required?
It was not explicitly required in the policy. So there was always the allowance, just like most official plans, that if staff identify or council identify the need for any kind of assessment. Then it can be required, um, but ultimately, for a lot creation, it wasn't as prescribed as it was in twenty twenty two.
And what what made the change in twenty twenty two, is it D five four that did, or why, why the change in twenty twenty two?
Well, I don't know how it was done in, uh, I I wasn't there in two thousand and four, when it was, when, uh, the township, uh, created their official plan. Um, but at the D series guidelines, I believe were though, they're they're actually quite old, uh, in terms of the D series guidelines, they haven't been updated in quite some time. Um, but that being said, eh, the review at the ato- the time of the twenty twenty two update. Ultimately, I believe it was the counties and the one window approach, as well as the conservation authorities that suggested the increase. Which, uh, township of Rita Lake staff also supported, um, in terms of, um, noting the requirement for an extra level of review at that time.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that information, so we're, we're looking at one hectare, right, so two, two point four seven, is that? So. So you're saying that. Rita Lakes up till twenty, so when does, when does Rita Lakes have it at one hectare then, now? And one hectare requires a hydroge and a terrain analysis?
So anything under zero point eight hectares, um, requires a hydro geological, uh, review of some sort. Uh, which is where that implementation policy came into play, so it was the zero point eight hectares for Rita Lakes. Um, anything between, uh, or anything over that size would not, as of right, trigger that requirement. It may still require that, uh, level of assessment, it really depended on that, the unique, um, features, but if it was under zero point eight. It automatically required some level of assessment. Since two thousand and twenty two.
Right, yeah, that's the way I read it, I mean, I read the word should and should in there as well, under the point eight, and nothing under point four. But I mean, we're doing one tonight that's for point three. So. It seems contradictory to me to, like, what, are we supposed to say no then tonight to the one that we've already said yes to? Like. We're always gonna go back, and I, it's, I know I'm not supposed to debate this, but. I just struggle with the fact that in that area where it's, and I get that the second building is going to have private services or. Or or whatever that exactly means as far as private services go. It's still well inceptic. And if, and if the idea is that we can't do. We can't do one hectare. Without doing a hydroge, I mean, at least the way I read this recommendation is that every lot that goes to two acres is going to have to now have. A terrain analysis and a hydrology study. Think am I wrong in thinking that? So we're not, okay, so the the goal of this entire exercise was to shrink roll lot sizes to one acre. Right, I mean, that's, that's what the group wanted to do, so we're not actually. We're not, we're keeping it at two point four seven.
No, we're, we're, we're ducking down to one acre, it's just a matter of, do you need a hydroge study or not, that's the question of the day.
So when do we need the hydroge study? Anything smaller than what is is allowed.
If we. Right now, the minimum lot size in a rural area is one hectare. Our official plan of it, um. Which is not acceptable in progress, in review progress, is, uh, proposes to change the number of lot sizes to point four hectares. But staff's recommendation is that when it's less than one hectare. A hydroge, a hydroge.
Okay, forgive me for being aggressive. Um, but why are we not going with point eight, if point eight is the example, why are we staying at one?
So the ministry's D five four guidelines allows, um. I have it open on my street, it ranges, I'm gonna find the right worrying here, um. If it's not in a hydroge sensitive area and the, um. The lot is point eight hectares, but the average lot size in the area is not less than. Well, I dare, I really should find some sort of. Uh, then what means is the issue is most, I mean, staff would apply that, by the way, we could apply the D five four something, and the draft resolution. That was drafted allows staff to use, um, that. Um, so you would say lots. Development system of lot, the average one hectare with no lot being smaller than point eight hectares. May not require a detailed astrological assessment, provided that we demonstrated that the area is not hydroge much sensitive. In such circumstances, it leaves responsibility to the opponent to adhere professional analysis for the qualified consultant. That the area is not hydroge much sensitive. We know that a large area of our township, from the high essential plant is hydroge. So we're not gonna be able to use that avenue and then circumcism, I didn't think, because we're.
Fair enough. Yeah, because there's many drinking water protection areas, you know, uh, in the, in the township, and that, that's fair, I just, just. Trying to get, I I think I understand what we have to do. Don't like it, but I get what we have to do, I just want to do it at the minimum, you know, like at that, at that point eight, but you're saying you can do it at the point eight, you have the discretion. If it's not in one of those zones, that's anything, one, one hectare and above, in that zone still may, may not require.
It may not be a drinking water protection zone, uh, but if you, if you look at, uh, they probably have a map of. Areas that are, um, have highly sensitive aquifers, and a lot of that works in part, you know, is included in that area. So we're not gonna be able to apply that under many situations, but. I honestly say, I work really hard with applicants to make sure the requirements are as minimum as I can. Um, while still leaving all the provincial guidelines, and I did apply that in this case as well, and I think the draft resolution. Um, allows staff to be able to do that.
Well, and I think, you know, asking, um. Ms. Mulhern to be here, uh, tonight, and and, you know, you couldn't have found somebody more suited. Um, because the one we keep going back to is is Rita Lakes, and we want to be as aggressive as they are, and we certainly don't want to be at a disadvantage. Um, and we've pushed super hard to get to this point, and I just, you know, was. It it's been hard, um, for us, it's hard to hear, can't quite get what you. What I'm trying to say is thank you, right, I mean, for putting up with, uh, the difficulty that that we ask and. Still, you know, getting us where, sort of where we wanted to be, and as hard of a discussion as that is sometimes for us. Uh, I do appreciate it, so. So thank you, and thank you for using, you know, the, the planning expert. That means a lot, you know, it shows me that you listened, and and it means a lot, so thank you. Okay, um, I don't have much to add, I don't know, uh, how long after, so it sounds like in twenty twenty two. Uh, the, the bigger changes implemented to have a bit of the flexibility on. On on what can be done in the rules that we had sort of contemplated, you don't happen to have any rough numbers on how often we were seeing, you guys were seeing. The need not to do a hydroge study under one, under one hectare, do you, or under point eight?
Sorry, is that directed to me? So in terms of, uh, how many times we were seeing actual lots, uh, for under the size of one hectare, it was actually, it wasn't very often. Um, we didn't actually have a lot of applications, and remember, these were permitted since two thousand and four. Uh, for lots of under one hectare in size, most lots being created, um, were indeed over that size regardless. Um, and then, oh, after two thousand and twenty two, again, most lots were over that. Which is why I actually didn't have a lot of examples to glean from in terms of that policy and implementing it since twenty twenty two to twenty twenty. I mean, I guess it was only a year and a half or so, but at the same time, we only had a, a handful of files that even had to go through that process. Because we're finding that most people didn't seem to want the smaller lot sizes in a rural area. We are finding that in a rural area, um, people want a larger lot size. So that was why we, uh, at least in my opinion, why I think we didn't receive a lot of applications. That, uh, were under the zero point eight hectares or one hectare, um, that required that extra level of review.
Thank you very much, um, any other questions? I do, I do, and and just to that, um, our, you know, our north border, you see the, um, the pressure that North Grenville's under. As Ottawa continues to expand, and you know, they're going through putting in water and sewer, you know, seventy million dollars worth of. Of water and sewer work there now, but a lot of that growth has happened with small lots and and water inceptic, right, or or well inceptic. So we're, we're going to start seeing over the next several years, that kind of pressure in the northern part of our township, right, as we. As we bought up, as Ottawa continues out, and when we, um, campaigned, one of the largest things from a lot of those rural residents that they told us. Was they didn't want two acre, two and a half acre lots, they wanted something smaller, and in fact, they were allowing the farmer to do, to continue to use a lot of their backyard. So that's, that's sort of why we brought it forward, as well as trying to, um, you know, I know the P P S was against strip development. You know, in rural areas, it didn't want to see small rural roads getting, you know, uh, getting divided up that way, but. I mean, from a, i- if we continue to move more land towards agricultural land. We have no choice but to, but to do strip developments, the only place we'll have left to develop, so. Uh, just a, just a counterpoint to that, um, my question to to staff is, um. Is this good enough, will this get it, do you think this will, like, you know, United Counties obviously said they wouldn't do it until we had an implementation. It'll get it done?
Yes, we'll get it done. If we accept the.
We don't want, we don't want this, it's, it's a hard one for staff and and us, and and, you know, like, I wasn't picking up Brittany there, but. I, you know, I just want to make sure that we don't have to do this again. Like, let's just do what we need to do and be done.
Well, that's a great segue for, uh, maybe I'll, I'll read the recommendation now and see if I can find a mover and a, a secondary. Uh, the recommendation that committee recommend that council approve. And make the attached resolution, which outlines conditions where the township would request a hydrogeology, hydro geological assessment. And train analysis as part of a severance application. Go ahead, mover.
All right, I'll I'll I will move this.
Okay.
There you go.
Second it. Uh, okay, and, uh, well, then we'll just call it to a vote. Are there any other questions? Nope, okay, we'll call it a vote then, I'll have a member.
All right, there you go. Well done, well done.
Thank you, Wendy.
Well, well done.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Brittany, by the way.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate you showing up to our, coming today to to help us, uh, walk through this and our our struggles we've had. Lots of conversations, so it's good to put it behind us and I think we, uh, we owe a lot of that to, as the mayor pointed out, uh, to Wendy to find the views. So that we could have this discussion in earnest, so, um, thank you very much.
Yeah, no.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Having a peer review gives you a ton more information and it's, and it's not a ton more, it just backs up the information that you're talking about. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, great, uh, and I will note that the answer is may I step away for a few minutes, but, uh. We'll see you shortly. Um, moving on to six B number two, oh, okay, yeah, there she's at, that's good. Application for zoning amendment, development agreement, twenty seven seventeen Gooden Road, the police. Uh, Wendy, uh, we want to do this one.
Yeah, this is coming. Two items rolled into one in the fourth year. We've got that condition to zone by law limits and draft about the agreement for twenty seven seventeen Gooden Road in order to fulfill conditions of severance. But that is the petition twenty three. The zoning amendment refills the subject lands from residential second density to residential third density, special exceptions. So we're going to be committed to extend those patch filings and allow for a reduced lot size of year point three hectares for, uh, the routine severance laws. So a public meeting was held on January twenty ninth to hear comments from the public regarding this application. Um, final report, we don't affect, consider related planning policies attached to this before in your agenda package. Um, as well as a draft by law for consideration. Uh, all laws of permission with severance acceptable, the one on the secondary to developing agreements with the township to implement recommendations of a hydro geological. And, uh, now from frame setting, um, but studying affirming that the complication of nitrate, oxide boundary is. Expected to exceed M C P's acceptable limit, which could result in negative impacts to below water surrounding properties. Um, so the report recommends a tertiary system for the severance land. Tertiary systems are regulated to reduce the nitrate by fifty percent. Um, and with the tertiary system on a new lot, the resulting concentration of nitrate would be within the acceptable limit of the property. Um, so to fund out that there are annual reporting requirements required for tertiary systems and the. Um, applicant owner is aware of those annual reporting requirements to be to the conservation authority. Um, and this development agreement also enforced without. So there's a draft development agreement. For communities consideration also attached to, um, this report.
Okay, that we're gonna get the, I think, uh, get right back to that show, it's a show, it's on me that one. Uh, all right, um, so thank you very much for that intro, uh, Wendy was scared. Guys are smelling this stuff. Thank you, Mr. Martell, you have any, uh, any comments you want to share?
Well, we just said point four, now we're looking at point three, that's a little bit of concern with. You know, I'll I'll go over feeling at the table. You just need to be very careful, yeah, it's.
President, I was gonna say it real quick. Is there, is there a staff? Thought on 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 that, I guess, so we've probably explore that because I think we all wrote down that same question probably after the last presentation, so.
Lots of difference. As a church or system.
I mean, my my thoughts here are that it's in the sun policy, like, it's different from the rural area, yeah, um.
Yeah, so I think through 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 the. Uh, I think with, although it may be under point four. The act of diligence with respect to the hydro G trend analysis completed identified. That there was a requirement for that tertiary system.
Nothing, Tim.
Key.
Yeah.
Right, incorporating that into the development agreement. Right, I think the the due diligence is there. I understand that the ministry, um, government. Uh, is likely not going to be, uh, advocating for anything less than point four. But I think that they understand that there are some. Circumstances where it's obvious that due diligence is there due to a reasonable level, there, you know, they're not going to be. You know.
Right, okay.
Oh, so. That's it, that that does mean.
Well, we'll put it to second. No, I'm okay with it, like, like, uh, our CEO says, we did do a due diligence, we have all of them. And they they passed, obviously, everything's up, golden, so I have no issues on it whatsoever. I'll take the recommendation.
It's like a, it's like a, it's like a fish trap or something, or like, I'm taking the bait, um, the. I I just, it, like, I don't know if it's oxymoron or. But it's funny, because on a, on a country road like Benton Road, we want to create a one acre lot and and do that, and we just were told. How and why we can do it. Now we go inside a settlement area because it's defined as a settlement area where there's a greater density, but everybody's still drilling a well and everybody, not everybody. This one will still have a private system. It's still allowed to do it. Now it's going under a tertiary system and it has the approval of of the M E C P. But it it just seems to me. It just seems to me contrary to what we just, what we just agreed to, like, it's in the biggest density. In one of those water protection areas. But yet they still said yes, so why in the middle of nowhere? Do you have to have, do you have to have it under one hectare? It it's not, it's just.
And we did not comment.
Oh, I thought they did comment on this one and said that they were fine with the tertiary system. Oh, it was colored.
Color that never.
Colored, sorry, I thought the M E C P are coming to the side of the.
I think to the chair, I think it's. What you're really talking about is that. Anything under that one hectare, we're saying the majority of the time due to the sensitivity of the. Of the supply will be welcome for higher G. This property has a higher G. So the same thing, it's a point four in the rural area, then the location has the high G. And they come back and says it doesn't require a tertiary system, just, right?
Yeah, I think my point is that, is that in that area, right, there's a lot of wells. It's a settlement, right?
Correct.
Our goal. Isn't so much, wasn't so much where that settlement area is. It's to take where we could only have one lot and make it to. Right, um, on a rural road somewhere. There isn't, you know, s- three hundred houses all within a, in an area, there might only be two houses. That's more my, my thought, I I just.
For the chair, I would say that from the staff perspective, we're trying. As hard as we can, try to make something happen.
I know, don't take my word for.
But but I think this demonstrates once again.
Yeah.
But 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 during that that extra due diligence, we can make something happen that feels what I would say not to.
Yeah, and thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thanks, definitely, don't mistake that. I just think there's a certain irony in the first one that we're passing. Uh, after picking it in is point three, so.
Right, and and I I think it's probably worth noting, it's probably, you know, especially in the settlement areas, I guess, be specifically insensible. I'm pretty sure we've done several of the last few years that have not been point four acres as well, right?
Yeah, exactly, you know, anyway, just, you know, unfortunate, unfortunate that at the time I'd get the same just topic about the point.
Nope, Mr. Smith. All right, uh.
Happy to.
Yeah, save here and I echo that and and, you know, I I I sort of share where the mirror is going on. You know, we we just said no, we're saying yes right after, you know. Um, yeah.
Would you like to read the recommendation?
Uh, I will, oh, I'll give you the recommendation.
You are real?
No, I don't. I'm just trying to mention it.
Yep.
All right, so on the recommendation, the committee, uh, recommend that council adopt. The attached zoning bylaw amendment and enter into a development agreement with the property owner as attached for the property at twenty seven seventeen Gooden Road. So, okay, moved by the mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor. All in favor, sorry, any other discussion? All in favor? All right, um, okay, that's unanimous as well. Thank you very much, okay. So moving on to six B three. Uh, application for zoning bylaw amendment nine twenty one County Road two, M G R renovations for E L C.
Um, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to move this recommendation with their further discussion. I think we've debated and discussed this one. Pretty well, um, you know, the only thing in here and it was indicated when they came to us. Uh, last time that that is in addition is that they want to make sure that they retain the existing zoning. Uh, as well, I'm happy to move it as it's written, it's it's. I I think it's exactly what we talked about, it's a perfect example, so comfortable moving.
Okay, like, really? Okay.
Seconded by the council. On the page.
Okay, so, uh, then the recommendation, uh, that's the, that's okay. The committee recommend that council adopt the attached zoning bylaw amendment for the property at nine twenty one County Road number two. You said you were moving it? Thank you very much. Thanks for keeping me up there. Uh, okay, any other questions or comments on this? No, okay, all in favor? Okay, that was a nice quick one, good to get that through. Uh, okay, so, um, six B four zoning bylaw amendment process. Uh, Wendy, I think this is, or is this? Yeah, perfect.
Yes, thank you, for the chair, um. Staff appearing from our committee members that we would like this process to go further and more efficient. So, um, reviewed, I'm trying to get a single application for zoning by law amendments. And I have a proposal to justice for efficiency. There's a photo I attached to the staff report. Um, that compared our current process with the changes that I'm proposing. I'm sticking ahead of my report just quickly to say that the planning act includes. Some timelines for certain steps involved in processing an application for zoning by law amendment. In fact, here's shown these deadlines and time requirements from planning act. Um, to illustrate our obligations, it doesn't necessarily show how long and fast it's going to take to complete them. So it shows therefore reference so that we can see what the planning act requires. Um, and also wanted to mention that in our current process, we sometimes have to alter it to meet these planning act timeline. These recent zoning by law amendments are like, they're very different, because it's kind of a public meeting, but they're going to. Uh, committee first, when you look ahead at the calendar and see you weren't going to make it within the ninety, uh, days, so we had, we still have to permission. If this after the advertising had already possessed the business, I ideal, so. First, um, suggestion for a change to this process is that, uh, council delegated the board to schedule the staff's for a public meeting. That, once the application being complete, some delays happen, we'll wait for the next, we need development. To get direct to the staff to schedule a public meeting, but if the board has delegated the staff, uh, we can start preparing notice and mailing list. Um, right away and, uh, start working to book the ad in the local newspapers soon. Um, another recommendation is to reduce the number of planning reports in our current program. You see a preliminary report to summarize the proposal, um, for committee's committee, uh, consideration when the public meeting is being scheduled. And then after all comments are heard at the public meeting, a final floor is prepared, seconded is planning policy and all. Cannot be through recommendation to committee and council. So if staff are scheduling public meetings, we could do just one planning report. Uh, and present it at the public meeting, and this would also reduce the cost of processing the application. Um, which is ultimately downward to the applicant. So if your concerns are raised at the meeting, however, committee could request additional information or a heads report prepared for a future committee. Meeting, so in some cases, you might still see two planning reports, but in really simple applications where it's not needed. We can just do with with one, that you see things along, um. Another recommendation is have public meetings held by this committee here, committee of the whole community development. So public meetings right now are currently held by the council, um, that to keep the committee members involved in formally planning. So remember, council except for nation one and two, the community development committee won't be notified in that application until after the public meeting. When they're asked to make a recommendation to council, but if. Community development committee is, um, hosting the public meeting, they could be more involved in the process, um. The intention would still be hold meetings on Monday evenings at six P M, uh, where we can, although they wouldn't necessarily have the first Monday of each month. Um, we can also send a list to all committee members, uh, including our advisory members, uh, when the public meeting is scheduled or even before the meeting is scheduled. Um, and, uh, just want to know that this change may require updates to their committees' terms of residence. So last recommendation is, um. You have a committee recommendation on the application at the public meeting, so. Their public meetings are held by the D P, the committee could make recommendations at the meeting rather than reviewing the application. At the next following, maybe the whole community is calling public meeting. So committee would have the option to defer the discussion to another meeting. They could also, like, at public meetings, they could defer the session to another meeting, um, they could also request more information from staff. They request the second planning report, uh, if we get more information we needed, if there's a lot of questions left unanswered, they would defer it to. Give us time to get more information, um, but in most cases where no comments are heard and all the questions are answered. You may get to make a recommendation to council right there at the public meeting, for the next time that application is heard, is council making the decision. We could kind of assume.
Yeah, so and and we, I I I was already part of this conversation separately, obviously, so. Um, just so that people are the, 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 the committee's aware, um, you know. Uh, and I mean, you're going to speak to us, by the way, but so, you know, if if a deferral is required, is is requested. It's a pretty simple thing as long as that they've moved, right, so. Do you want to elaborate on that, or we had this conversation a little bit ago? We can just defer without a lot of conversation if we do it before we get moved to discussion, right?
Sure, yeah, it's very, very normal, we're not necessarily negative towards the application, it just means that we're going to need some more time. Or we need some more information or make a decision. Most of us want to know what the application is. I told you that this committee is going to want to defer it, it's a pretty, typical criteria, all the questions are answered and you'll have a full planning report. And if you knew the previous recommendations are are accepted, um, then, um. It would just seem things along where it's appropriate.
Thank you very much, so.
I, yeah, sure, um. Anything that that cuts down. The burden and the red tape and simplifies the process for anyone who wants to develop is a good thing. And some, sometimes the less they talk to us and the more they talk to you, the more streamlined that actually is. Um, uh, so when it comes to all of these, uh, recommendations, I I don't think I have a problem with any of them, the. The last one. So. So the. So the public meeting. Is a CDC meeting? I'm just trying to figure out what exactly that, what exactly that means, because it, in my mind, a public meeting is, is a public meeting. And then we would have an item on an agenda at the CDC meeting. After that, where we could discuss it. But we're not supposed to make decisions at public meetings, correct?
I think we just as well should probably make decisions at.
Just take information?
Public meeting, but I will work with our clerk, um, in terms of.
So to the clerk. For the, I haven't looked at this in the municipal act, but in the municipal act under public meetings, is that appropriate?
Chair, council can delegate the public meeting. As we currently do for a lot of our meets. Um, no matter what, it always goes back to the municipal council. The board members on all our meetings always is. This certainly was the issue.
No, my my idea, my question is, can a public meeting be a meeting of? It's still a meeting of council and would it be appropriate in a public meeting to make those decisions? Are we there just to receive information?
To channels in issuing, if there's been many. Fast practices government, uh, practices for organizations of these policies. That we're sure can use private. Uh, I can reach out and all. Learn, we showed if there's a couple of their planners, um, health and officers. Uh, such to confirm that people that just come with us, I don't think.
As long as staff doesn't see any issue with number, number four, I'm okay with 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 all of them. I found number four a little weird, but. Because it's certainly a a big change from, from what we are and. I mean, we're not actually going to debate it, right? Unless we're going to debate it at council.
So, uh, through through the chair, I think I would say. Like in circumstances where. Like in circumstances where, let's say the M G R.
This is more appropriate.
Like like a public meeting, right? It's sort of been, it's it's been, there's been no comments. There is no indication that anybody has any issue with. Right?
Right, okay.
And heard something, it's like. You need to just receive that information and say, oh, debated that at 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 committee, we're likely that not much today. And that goes to council. This way, it's just like, if if there's a comfort, if there is a comfort level amongst the committees. Make a recommendation. If if there's not comfort level, you just defer it, and then it goes to the committee for further debate. It's just the stream line where. Where where there are basically various forms of that there is.
Are are we, are we, sort of through the chair, are we able to debate them at a public meeting? After, so like, let's take this one where we had a good wholesome discussion. Uh about uh there, you know, there's no concerns from public. But we had a good wholesome di- discussion and we we asked for more recommendations to do with the lane. Right? Uh and and easement versus sale implications to the other property. There was a lot of information to to unfold. Are are we doing that in the public meeting? Or are we then saying deferring it for another month to the next?
So if in that circumstance where. If it gives. It doesn't be clear feeling of pretty much that the committee that there is no real need for any further discussion. He he made a recommendation, that the feeling is that needs to be discussed further, and he would defer.
Okay, and. And just trying to get my brain through this. So so a public meeting, nobody comes, nobody speaks. That's eighty-five, ninety percent of them. But what if we have concerns and we wanna have those heard concerns heard? We have to wait until council to do it, or is it appropriate for us to do it at the public meeting? Like, that's more my concern with this, cuz it's never gonna hit a committee level, right? It's gonna go directly from a public meeting to council.
Well, I I wouldn't say, yeah, well. I would say that. If you, if nobody had a third question. You would, the the committee would need a recommendation. But if there, but even if you have. I think what I what I wouldn't want to see is if it started to go down into uh debate.
Right, that's my question.
Exactly, exactly. So I think.
Comfort level at the table is not there.
Yeah, fair enough. So so. What, from a procedural standpoint? Would it, and I love this, don't don't get me wrong, I love this, I think it's gonna speed things up. But would it not make this, would it not make sense to include it on that C D C agenda immediately following at six thirty? So that we would have the ability to have the discussion. We know in advance if we're we're putting out information for the public meeting. If. Were, then we have the opportunity to actually debate it at that C D C and not slow things down. Unless there's a need for more information, which it would be deferred anyways, but it might still be a simple thing like this lane. Where we could actually have a good discussion and a good debate, not slow anything down if it was on the C D C. Or if it wasn't needed, then you just. Exit off the agenda when you get to the six thirty meeting and say, there's no need for this to be on the agenda. We're gonna alter the agenda, cuz it went through easy.
So I think through the chair, I hear what you're saying in an ideal world, if 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 the public meeting lined up with.
Well, we're saying it will.
No, not significantly less than that. What we're actually, what we're actually saying is now the public meeting itself, I tell you. Saying this public meeting is actually, it's a special meeting. Million of all.
Or, but but it's going to pre, it's gonna be, it's gonna be before, is it not at six o'clock on the first Monday of every, every?
No, I said it wouldn't necessarily, it would be six o'clock before a meeting, but it wouldn't necessarily be on the first Monday of every month. We do that, I feel like the sooner the more efficient. So we have to notify committee members that there's going to be a special committee.
Now I'm getting it. I I did read that, now that you say that, I do remember. Right? Cuz it could be a six o'clock meeting in advance of of a of a of a facility is a county meeting, right? A committee of the whole. Right? And and it could have been in that, and we would, and the concern was that we would bring in the committee members just for that half hour public meeting, and then they would go. And the other committee would be there, right? So we're not gonna get a chance to debate it other than the council. It's not gonna go to committee. Okay, so you're saying we may not need to go to committee? Yeah, okay, all right. Most, probably ninety percent of them don't, or ninety-five percent of them don't, right? It would actually expedite things a lot. Yeah, okay, I'm done, I'm good.
It's all the questions that I think we're all asking anyways, so.
Wendy, thank you, thank you, thank. No, I I'm serious and staff for 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 trying to do exactly what we wanted to produce the red tape. Get things rolling. And get houses built, so you know, uh thank you so much for cutting the red tape. Oh, I'm just dessert, it's great hands. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Don't even ask me, man, I can't talk about it on the money.
I'm not even gonna bother either, so uh I guess we'll just read the recommendation. Uh the committee recommends council institute the following proposed changes to the township zoning by law amendment process. One, delegate authority for scheduling the statutory public meetings required by planning act to staff. And two, staff prepare a single planning report for the public meeting and in place of an advanced preliminary report for committee. And three, statutory public meetings required by the planning act will be held by the committee of the whole community development. And four, grant authority to the committee of the whole community development to make a recommendation to council at the conclusion of the public meeting. So, do I have a move? Moved by Councilor Joe Martell, a seconded, seconded by Councilor Wintas now. Okay, any further?
Just one question, going back to. Going back to number four. I'm I'm not there yet. I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just not. I don't wanna not vote for this cuz I I'd like. The deputy mayor, I certainly, I certainly wanna get houses built, and I certainly, he sounded like Dougie there for a bit. So I I certainly, I certainly believe in the red tape and the burden and the streamlining as much as we can, but I'm also a procedure guy. And and this doesn't feel right. It it doesn't, I don't know why it doesn't feel right, but it, the number four doesn't feel right to me. And I'm not sure why I feel that way, and I don't feel. I don't know that I, like, for me, I'm not sure that I have enough. And it's usually Chris that says this, but enough enough information, I'm not sure that it's. I I honestly didn't read that part of the municipal act, and and I struggled to vote yes when. We're gonna see this again at council. I'm gonna vote against it tonight. I'm gonna vote against it tonight, but I'm, I mean, cuz I haven't done my homework. And I, and I, and I, I promise that once I've done my homework, I will support it a hundred percent, but until then, I'm not.
Uh okay, so we have a mover, we have a seconded, um and any other discussion, anybody? Okay, all in favor? Okay, noted quarter one.
Thanks again, I think.
Yeah, I appreciate as well. I like what we're doing here. Okay, uh moving on to six B four. Uh that was it, sorry. Moving on to six C, work in economic development. Uh number one, application for C I P funding, twenty-nine-nine Dundas, Spetsak Holdings. Wendy, if you want to introduce us to this one, it looks like uh pretty straightforward.
Uh okay, so this, I didn't consider an application to find another company. Better holding recently purchased, we noticed, two zero nine eight Dundas Street, as the one to be different P P R O. Uh the property included in the community improvement project area, it permits to the building exterior of planned add. Uh near stage rehabilitation project. Playing permits include three new windows, front doors and stone facade. The owners apply for the property design improvement program, which is the right ability of up to fifty percent of of the cost of these works to a maximum of five thousand dollars. I prepared this report for maturely, my apologies. Um the owner did originally. Um also applied for the property in tax increment equivalent grant program. We, I don't know if we've seen the application for that um in recent years, but um through pre-consultation and conversation with the owner, we. Um determined that this project is not eligible for that C I P program. So it was meant to, to remove from the application, it was meant to be removed from the uh from the uh staff. My call to get for that program. And the reason is that it is, uh that program applies to mixed-use buildings with residential use on the. Um so quality implications, the application makes the general eligibility criteria and program certificate criteria for the property plan improvement program. The program provides grants for front, rear or sidewalk side improvements, which is part of it. Other projects include repair or replacement of storefront doors as well as for firsthand use rate. The app is provided to folks specifically for the front door replacement, then that portion of the project is expected to cost between. Um twelve thousand and fifteen thousand dollars. The property design improvement program allows grants to be provided to eligible applicants for totalists. Fifty percent of the construction cost to a maximum of five thousand dollars. So think with the quote that they provide, providing. Um it's gonna exceed that five thousand dollars amount. We don't really start our communication. Uh that committee affirms the application uh to your one, from whatever starts the holding. Remember, fifty percent of the actual cost can be different by improvements to a maximum of five thousand.
Okay, thank you very much, and I have already got a mover. You're too late, sorry, it's first cancer, cancer, we're told that to it, sorry, cancer smell got to it first, so it's like my cancer smell. Uh okay, uh so discussion, uh anything to add, uh any, anybody else?
Looking forward to seeing. Get to work.
Okay. Uh, well, it doesn't sound. Uh okay, I have nothing as well, I'm into your point, uh just, it's nice to see the area get get eleven hundred dollars, and it's all good, so, yep. So uh we have moved on to second year, all in favor? Okay, there we go, so moved. Um, all right, so moving on to six C two. Alternative options to easement for twenty-nine on Dundas Street, uh same property we just talked about, obviously. Um and Wendy, do you wanna just give us, I guess, the synopsis of uh of the options that we're talking about? That'd be great.
Sure, I don't know how to name this report, um any shorter, so sorry, I think a lot.
Yeah. No, I I think we can probably, we have three right, three options here you talked about, we just wanna, we, I think we all know the history of it.
Okay. So. So option number one, the license agreement, um to be prepared to permit special holdings in use of the laneway. Um we can add for the payments, um in terms of community to business, however, the township will be able to cancel it with no delay. Uh and this differs from the easement that was proposed, because the right would be um transferred to. Uh for the easement, the right would be transferred to the owner, whereas license agreement is permission is being granted for a specified plan. Um I know the owner stopped definitely significantly in building improvements and would um probably hesitate to make improvements to the laneway. Uh if a future right to use um were not guaranteed. So the owner has expressed a concern with these options, uh with with their their legal role in this location. Um option number two is the sale of the laneway. So council measures to spell the laneway in accordance with the statute of sale of surplus plan policy. Um it would result in an undersized lot at two zero nine nine Dundas, oh, at um. Sorry, two zero nine three, two zero nine five Dundas Street. So if the order two zero nine nine doesn't should purchase the lane, they would always maintain a little rate to use it. However, it does, it does involve the committee's confirms for future development on undersized lot. I would also note that um if looking with our legal indisconfirmation, we should, the township wouldn't have to be a minor variance. If we were to have a, create this undersized lot um by separate profit and give a lot addition. I know we love the undersized lot. We're allowed to do that. Option number three is the sale of two zero three, two zero nine five Dundas Street. The council measures to declare the entire lot surplus in the name of the township that accept offers with a vague reversal in accordance with the township's sale of surplus lane policy. Um conditions of the sale could include the declaration of easement in date from two zero nine nine. Option number four is to proceed with the easement. So council measures to proceed with easement. The draft easement agreement has been prepared for committee's consideration and is to be registered to the title of all properties and survives future ownership. Unlike the license agreement, it cannot be canceled without permission from both owners. Plus, the holding with significant investment in revitalization of two zero nine nine Dundas Street with plans to grow their business, P P R O infernal. The easement provides assurance for the owner that they have continued access to the side and rear of the building. Through each shipments efficiently, but they're restricting parking for impacting.
Hey, thank you very much. Uh and uh. Let's see, it's suggested we're discussing this at this point, right? There's no recommendation, or is there a recommendation?
Our our recommendation hasn't changed.
Right, so we. So, yeah, fair enough. Okay, um, okay, so discussion, so uh councilor Martell.
Hi, I'm, you know, the the owners are here, they said they like the ease of time. That's the route I go.
Okay, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I don't know, I'm gonna um sit back and hear the rest of this.
I I do have uh one question, and and I'll ask it to staff, but it may require. Bit of wee way, cuz I forgot to ask the question until they sat down. The um easement that's put in front of us on the, on the uh. On the uh. The preliminary diagram, I think it's uh page. One twenty-five, one seventy-one. The the line for the easement, and I'm I'm gonna make the assumption they're gonna do improvements to that laneway. So that they can access the door. That line is right down the center of it. Is the hedge staying? Or is the hedge going? I'm asking staff first.
So I think through the, through, through, through the chair. Say from from staff perspective, we see that edge.
Okay, and so then my next question would be, it's on the dead center, at least. In some portions, it's on one side, some portions, it's on the other side. Who's gonna maintain the hedge?
Through through the air, I'm I'm gonna say that it would be uh.
Plan is that the hedge stays and it gets maintained by us. And one more, if I can, so the. If I understand that the easement agreement cannot be terminated unless both sides agree, so. So if um we want this business to succeed as best it can. Um in the eventuality that ten years from now, after great success, uh they choose to retire. Um the easement continues along with the property in the sale, and then. Then we would have to, if we wanted to terminate that at any time, we would still have the ability to do that, but it would be with the next owner.
He said it last time, it would be with the.
The next.
Oh, the next owner would have to agree.
Okay, so it's in perpetuity, basically. It's it for me, it's a.
It's a bill, uh my opinion is the number two. So the laneway, it just keeps the other properties apart.
Unless you're gonna debate that, I wanna debate that. Uh and I I struggle, and I I've struggled before with the wording of that as it being called a park. Um it's not a park, it's not a park, it's not a park, it's a commercial lot that that when that building was torn down. Um, it's not a park, it's not a park, it's not a park, it's a commercial lot that, that when that building was torn down and that, that greenery was put up, it was voted against at this committee, the, uh, the committee of the whole, it wasn't committee whole then, it was a community development committee. They voted against it, the council at the time chose to still continue on with the investment of making it appear like a park. But that it would always retain its commercial designation, so anytime anyone calls it a park, I get my back up a little bit.
Right.
Um, because it is a commercial law, it is a developable law, and if somebody comes along and wants to develop it, we have the opportunity to do that, and I use the example of what's going on in Prespa right now. Uh, behind their municipal building, where people have allowed their dogs to walk, allowed their dogs to, to become a park for people to use, and now they're struggling to be able to develop it when they want to build some houses there. I, I want every moment that I get the opportunity to say on the record that it's a commercial law and it's for development, the first person that comes along to me and suggests they want to build something there, I'll, I'll bring it and we need to build on it, so it's not, it's not a problem. So.
Do legal. Um, I do have a few things, I guess I want to talk about, because I, I think that it's important that we, we get those out there, so, um. And, and I mean, I, I'm not, you know, I was unsure where to go and maybe leaning a different direction a little bit now. You know, based on the mention about, I mean, you know, part of it is, I know we can't lean on this, but you know, it's kind of, you know, the way it's always been as far as that line goes, so that's uh, that's something that's, you know, I, I've had other people tell me that as well, and then so, you know, that's, that's, that's something. Um, and then with regards to the roof, the roof grading and how it's built into that area anyways, uh, does give you a little more, some more, more things to think about there. Um, so what I want to know though with regards to the, the, our property on, on that side, if you will, is um, if I understood correctly, uh, because of the roof, because of the grading, the drainage, everything else, we would not, like, we'd be having to have that space. Uh, sorry, whoever built there, pardon me, uh, wouldn't be able to build basically over that where the easement is in question anyways, is that the true statement?
Um, there's not too many street commercial, not a majoristic thing or area inside that, but I think the interior to where it's a vacuum is probably zero. That being said, it wouldn't be a good idea to build that. Maybe a big question for the building to show, I don't know, but I'm zoning by law, I think what happened to other buildings to show me.
Fair enough, and, um. So with regards to if we, if we do sell the property, um, and, and it was decided that we had with option four, which was an easement. This, this, this space, you know, we don't want to become the referee involved in that, right? So we're talking about an easement, it's, I'm assuming it's not for parking, it's for delivery only, for both buildings essentially would be the case, or would it be a parking lot as well that could, could get contentious that we'd have to have people step in and, and resolve that? But I guess that's for anybody, I'm not sure, but, but clerk with her biologics, great to have more, more on that or not, but. I just don't know if there's a challenge, if there's an issue there. Great, and I think, uh. Yeah, otherwise, I think that's the, that's the questions I had just to put it there, because I just thought that there was, it left a little bit to, you know, we do want to eventually, obviously, have such, there's a commercial space in that area. Um, and I, I just think I worry a little bit about that, oh, I don't know the other ones that I had. Uh, so if it was decided to go with a lease agreement, uh, if we decided to a leasing agreement instead with, say, a twenty-year option or something like that, I get that the, uh, that the owners, you know, want to do some renovation there and possibly repave it, things like that. Is there, is there a method we'd have to, it would be unfair of us to add five years or ten years, say, actually, because we've now sold it and, and, you know, they, they have used for the entire space. So is there something we could do there, or what does that look like to make sure that we don't, uh, we, we try to accommodate, um, uh, uh, this, this, this building right now, I'm sorry, the, the easement that was in place, how we compensate for that? Is that clear?
Sorry, if we granted.
So if no, no, if we granted a license, if we would instead.
Okay.
What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say is, like. I, I, I just worry about us trying to develop, so I'm telling that land. Um, and if we, sorry, if we decided, if we decided to end the lease agreement, okay. Uh, how do we make sure that the, that these, that businesses there are a hot pocket, we can do something to compensate for that, right? Is there a methodology we'd have there, or? Because if they're gonna invest, you know, I don't know, twenty, thirty, thirty thousand dollars, whatever, in the repayment or something like that. I can get why they wouldn't want to do that, right?
Through the, through, through the chair, um, the most agreeable. You could lower rate something within, in, in that arena, I, I, I'm suspect that would allow, you know, up to a certain point in time. Whether that's ten or fifteen or twenty years, and it's, it's sold or mark the case and you being compensation for improvements in that. In that, in that, on, spelled out. As, as in that. The comfort was in, in that.
Okay. Um, I don't have anything else then, and when you have anything else, that.
So is there a recommendation, there's no recommendation?
So I was actually asked with the next steps.
All right, so then I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move, uh, option number four, sir.
I'll second that.
All right, any other discussion of that?
Yes. Uh, I wish, I wish we didn't have to have this option, one, two, and three, and all that, we had such a big discussion on it. I wish someone would, I wish we would all went down and looked at what this gentleman has done. Spinning a, a beautiful door, uh, where he's gonna unload where we want him, where you want in the first place a month ago for easement. He's got a brand new fence in the back where you can open up a door without getting screws into it where the other neighbor is, I'm afraid. I'm not sure what's gonna happen with that, I, I dare say that there's gonna be another fence that he's gonna put up. So in all, all, he's, he's done everything in his power to make it that corner beautiful and to, and he wants to just improve his business. So, option two, I, I can't say nothing. Uh, I, I hope we get this done, let's, and I mean, get on with doing whatever he's doing, this is doing a great job, but I just wish he would have went down, saying he would have had a better understanding than than these pictures, these pictures do not do justice.
Just to, you said option four, you went, you went to stay up, did I say option four or option two?
Oh, yeah, I know, and I can do with that, I don't think.
I might, I just, I think it was. Okay, um, so that's been moved and seconded, any other comments? Well, okay, uh, then let's go to vote, all in favor? Okay, there you go. There you go. Okay. But if you didn't, it's still recommended. All right, so that's good, uh, moving on.
Want that two dollars?
Okay, give it to him until the end of the month, keep it going, okay. Uh, moving aside to six C number three, ah, the river route transit route. River Route Transit Report. Uh, Dave, what is this stuff? The C A O, sorry?
And, and there, uh. So with respect to the partnership agreement, uh, it sort of runs from April first to March thirty-first of each year. And by eight, by, for February in the twenty-eighth of, of, of the year that's coming due. Uh, basically, each of the municipalities needs to determine whether uh, they want to continue, uh, to be, in the partnership agreement for another year. So just, uh, in order to help make that, um, decision or, or, or help the discussion along, uh, just a report with respect to twenty twenty-three um, activities. So ridership is up, it's about forty-seven percent, you can see the, uh, the chart. It's really been, uh, progressive since the first four months of twenty twenty-one, which was, uh, an uneasy time, to say the least, uh, in, in twenty twenty-two, we can see some progress with respect to ridership and that has continued into, uh, into twenty twenty-three. Under the financial considerations, just at the bottom, um, as part of the agreement, it speaks to the, the measurement of success and it's the sort of a continuous improvement. So if you look at the bottom line with respect to that measurement, in twenty twenty-one, the, the first four months, it was a bit, uh, a profit of fifty-five dollars and fifty-four cents per, per person provided. In twenty twenty-two, so that dropped to forty-three dollars and twenty cents. And in twenty twenty-three, that actually dropped to twenty-nine dollars and nine cents. What we're anticipating in twenty twenty-four is, is likely to look a little bit conservative of looking at that thirty-one dollars uh, per person providing. For the, the suggestion or the recommendation is to, um, renew the comparative agreement for the upcoming year. Uh, utilize the modernization of money to cover our share, uh, for, for, for the upcoming year. And I think we're, uh, twenty twenty-four, there'll be some further discussion, because I think we are approaching the time where there needs to be, um, a, a little bit more of a pulse of discussion for us and, and as we're reaching the point where we're utilizing several of those plus that have been, uh, in place, I think we're, we're eventually going to, to be out of that cycle and I think there, I think there's some discussion with respect to they think that they're in the process of, I think, so that's the, really the third part of the recommendations, so I hope it's not other option with respect to following response. Uh, passing dedication.
Thank you very much, Mr. C A O, they, it's good to see the numbers and the progress that's been made, so, uh, uh, I said, thanks for, good to see you, and to that, I'll turn the information to the, to the queen, so.
Through the chair, through the table on the left, when we talk about rider numbers, are those metrics broken down anymore? Do we know how many of those actually from our municipality?
Uh, through the, uh, through the chair, I don't have that number with me this evening, but typically we do monitor the, uh, the activity per stop. So, and can, I, I can say that the, um, uh, those, their mall seems to be the, like, the highest stop at our point, uh, in, in, in the circuit, but the, the higher, the, the highest rents are, are of stops in us. But they don't, but they don't have to pay the rent. I mean, the following, no worries.
No, I'm thrilled, uh, I mean, I've been, we almost lost it here last year or two years ago, and, and it's, it's just changed, it just keeps getting better and better, and I think I mean, it's, it is a bus stop in Portland, it literally is at the mall, if you go there now, before, if you go there and the bus go off, that we maybe go on, we maybe go. Now, we can be sure this will be two, three, maybe four people, maybe six people, I use it from Johnstone, the card. Uh, uh, I, it's, I just can't say enough about it, especially with people with no license or no vehicle. They can go all the way to Carter, the Bronco, and then get the Bronco at the superstore and go anywhere for five bucks. I mean, to try to take a cab or try to drive for that, you just can't, you just can't, so I just hope that we can do some tinkering with the, I hope the CEOs can do some tinkering with some changes of, of, of times. Uh, that's all I, but I mean, that you guys done a super job of getting together and, and to, you know, put it on the radio and Facebook and so on, so I can't say enough. I'm a hundred and ten percent supporters.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I echo that, um, um, you know, the, the, the D M, it's certainly a, uh, you know, something that we both fought hard to make sure continued forward, we can note that it's, it's never going to be a a revenue neutral game. Um, I think it's worthwhile noting that we're still using municipal modernization funding to pay for it. It hasn't directly cost the taxpayers evidence for part of anything at this point, um, from, from taxes collected from the housing taxes, modernization dollars that, that funded. You know, it's a, it's a good news story, I mean, we're, we're getting there, it's slow, it's steady. Um, but there certainly are some hurdles, you know, coming when, you know, with the bus and there's going to be considerable costs uh, there, and we're at that point where, where the, the hard decision's coming. But I don't think it's gonna be that hard, to be honest, I think that we've, we've seen that, you know, rural life, especially where we live, um, it's affordable. And sometimes with affordability, a lot of people don't have access to to vehicles, it's gonna get harder and harder with carbon tax and things like that going up. And access to public transportation, as much as we didn't buy into it completely originally, um, is going to make sense as we move forward, and this, this thing's still in its infancy, it's, it's going to get better, it's going to get tweaked, like the deputy said as well. And I think, I mean, we don't reach efficiency, but it's certainly a necessity for, for all of our citizens, but especially our, our lower-income and those, you know, those ones that need that, that extra support. So I'm proud that, that the group continues to support it, and, and I'm proud that, that we've made those difficult decisions, you know, our many years ago, it is now four or five years ago, so. It's been, thank you.
You're really, you're.
Uh, do the same thing as, as it, there is, I have some comments about it. I don't want people to travel, I want people to can't afford to play it else, I think. What I'm looking forward to is the, the watch out. So I think that's the reason why everybody's all stayed, until they get out of the bus or on a train. But, yeah, I'm all for it.
Thank you, it's good for business, thank you, the ball. Uh, no, and, and I've, I've, I've been easy yes as well, I mean, I, I do think, uh, uh, when you, when you take in the comments, uh, uh, future improvements and stuff. I, I, I hope, but I don't know what the process looks like, but I hope a process is taken, undertaken as well this year to, uh, to do a survey of the riders, but also of the people who are not riding, to see what we can do to help the community, the researchers, the survey, or how they get information from people, but I'm hoping that, uh, uh, we'd love to, I'd love to hear more about that as well, because I, I do think that, uh, it's a necessity that we have, and it's, it's, you know, uh, while not everybody uses it, um, it does, it does help, uh, in a bunch of ways for people who don't use it as well in the township, it keeps our carbon footprint, know if you're looking at it from that perspective, or, uh, you know, to more parasoc, so, so I'll definitely all in favor, but I, uh, like I said, I would like to make sure we had some science behind, uh, uh, any future changes, what I do there, and I do think that, that sounds like we all want these changes, so, um. But with that, uh, you've given the recommendations, so I'm just gonna go for a mover.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I have just one more question through the chair, to the C A O, if I could, this being three different municipalities working on this. How do we physically tweak that, how does it manage? You know, we're talking about tweaking things.
So, so through this, through the chair, as part of this incorporated into the partnership agreement, there is, there is a committee, it's typically, uh, the, the C A O's or public works department that, that will get, look at items in opportunities for improvement, so I anticipate, uh, that later this year, that might be the, so, so, somebody selling back to, uh, to each individual council to, uh, to take, uh, that, that equal that. Um, thus far, it's just been, uh, what I, what I would say, minor, minor tweaks, uh, just trying to make sure that we're, we're, we're staying consistent with, uh, with the schedule, so that individuals that, that need to take, uh, the, the, the transport transportation and, and be sure that the, I think the bus is a little easier at, at, at the times that, that's expected. I know that there's some, um, some question for, uh, for, for some extended services that have a, and, uh, it will be, uh, it will lead to some interesting conversations, and, and just dealing with the same with municipality, multiple municipalities and all.
And I, I think it's worthwhile noting too, I mean, ours is an operation, it's not a, it's not a, a capital agreement at this point, right? I mean, Brockville, Brockville's involved by survive, by providing the bus and driver. The three municipalities pay for it, but, but that decision is coming. Um, if Brockville doesn't have a surplus bus, or usually what we get is the one that's going out of service from the fleet, so they don't have one that's coming out of service from the fleet, we're going to be in the position where we have to buy a bus, and that's going to change the entire discussion, because where does Brockville fit in? And that's going to change the entire discussion because where does Brockville fit in?
Just wondering how we manage actually physically manage the.
Then that's the big one that we're going to see coming coming forward. The operational part of this, you know, the the C O's can do the tweaks and have the. There's a bigger investment.
For sure. But there's uh there's also eighty percent of the federal government capital funding. And they're pushing, prevent your. So we'll, I'm sure there's lots of grants there. I'm think I'm so happy it's it continue on. I just put on Facebook. We just paid our dues for another year.
We don't vote until and we don't vote until the end of the month.
I'm still I'm still.
Yeah, excellent segue though uh on the voting at least to push it on to council. Uh so. Okay, moved by the mayor. Any uh seconded by the deputy mayor? Uh any other questions or comments?
Uh thank you for your help online.
So all the favor. Okay, good. Okay, moving on. Finally, 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 uh to number six, D, play and recreation, information on the uh. Uh it's information, I'm sorry, recreation programming updates.
The fourth session of the township is our cross building. Thursday, February first at the South Edwards Community Center. Uh the second session of the township.
I can hardly agree, so.
Uh the second session of the township's adult fitness class began in January with eight classes on Tuesdays at the South Edward'sburg Community Center. Um free family day, public skating will be available at both Spencerville Arena and Ingredion Center on Monday, February nineteenth from two thirty till four P M. Um and just some upcoming courses. We have our aquatics manager starting in February. Standard first aid in April, standard first aid recertification in May, safeguard course in April and May. Uh quark supervisor course in May, our national lifeguarding certification in May. Uh national research in June, swim instructors in June, lifesaving instructor June, examiner's course in June and bronze courses in July.
For that, um any other questions, Thomas? Looks like you've been very, very busy. Nice to see. Uh where did you see? You gotta help me out. Where's the free skating on family day? Never mind. It's time to go to nineteen. See, there's even more. Thank you. There's gonna be other options on in the card too, so. Thank you. So. Uh Rachel, for programming, as far as um uh summer camps or day camps for the kids at both Ingredion. So you're you're excited. Um. How's that would be like from a staffing standpoint and from from a programming standpoint? How what are those programs look like this year? We all get.
Um still waiting for the lifeguarding, like the pool aspect. But for camp, I believe we're hoping to hold all four sessions at the Ingredion Center this summer. And all four sessions here as well. So we should be able to have forty and forty at both camps all summer long. Um and staffing for camp so far is going well.
Looks strong.
Yes.
And I and the reason I ask that is because on social media, I certainly noticed Prescott advertising, Elizabeth kind of Kitley advertising. I know we're advertising and sharing. You know, all the time as well that South Bend assets and we're we're all competing for a very small number of people and. And I just, if there's anything we can do, you know, as a as a council to help support and bolster those those efforts. Be sure, be sure for you or, you know, I know my facilities director too, you know, but if there is something we need to make sure that we're. You know, competitive with those, please make sure you add. We don't want to be short-staffed and not be able to offer those camps. A lot of people come up for this.
Yes, of course.
All right, and um all I have, and it's not. It's it's stuff which you brought here. It's value after the spray, by the way, and like this. Um and also looking for seeing that upcoming meeting. I'm assuming um uh sort of a anticipated thing to be doing. You know, you've done a lot of recreational stuff last year with the great things, you know, like. If you go back to keep it back, you'll be yeah, the inflatable day and my grandkids have great time and I really come in. And a lot of kids saw, but then a lot of the kid here, but we'll get into that later on. But uh this is some sort of a schedule. They're not even saying, which is sort of the thing. Over the you know, over the next summer, which we have as well. So yeah. All right, that's all I have to do. Great job on this and uh.
So.
No, no, I am not getting the snowball.
Okay. Uh all right, so uh moving on to uh number six, D two. Is a discussion on canal bank beautification. Who's walking us through this one? Too many choices on this. C O, gotcha. All right.
Okay. Here, uh let me just refer to the canal bank vegetation activities for five one four. Uh you you will, I think, if you've always been around Red Street, we we've started with the. Uh tree opening up around the pedestal uh area. Well, we do have a sort of a proposal back from color through a a sanitation conservation. So to to do some uh stone stability analysis and. But the tax that the that service agreement, it's about uh a twelve thousand dollar cost. I think it will be um. It will assess the moving moving forward beyond the the margin of that one with uh closer. One of the one of the areas that we also looked into was the opportunity with respect to the the grant, maybe uh. Increase the uh the amount of activity that we we key had for that sort of uh. Phase one uh cleanup. And I think there is a reasonable opportunities through the you know, through the rent man program. So what the the difficult here is that the uh. The application window closes February first. Uh we're certainly looking on 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 an application that would uh. Look at a few features in the realm of the uh sort of that pedestal area and and potentially on. Uh 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 the ten dot area inside of that ten dot area, the sort of naked uh. An area where you could park in that parking lot and and see a couple of features there that sort of leads you over to. To the sign to 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 a couple additional uh features as a as a lead in of the. History in that. But I I certainly uh stopped a a couple of conversations with Councilperson Martel. He may want to speak a bit more on that. On that initiative. I think we have the makings for a reasonably good application to be submitted on in that concrete. Uh there is so many with with respect to our cheap budget uh to do some additional cleanup.
Thank you. And that I think with that introduction, well, uh let Councilor Martel speak first. So yes, I would, uh first of all, I would like to thank the C O and the direct director. You know, when he when and the C O has said there's a grant available, he could have easily sat down with the 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 recreation. Team and and developed it himself, but he opted to actually include me in the process, which I am almost certain made it. Much more cumbersome for his side of the team, but it was a great experience and it 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 fostered a feeling of teamwork. And when I I left that meeting, I sent out some messages to local businesses because we thought it would be good to have, you know, some letters of support and it. It just kind of snowballed. The feeling I got, I passed on to, you know, the folks I talked with and. The feedback was fantastic and we want this project to work. That's the way it's got to be. It's. You know, it's not something that council's doing. It's not something that staff's doing. It's a it's a project that the whole community needs to to take some. Some ownership in. And I I think that's there and I think it's it can happen. The other thing that came from filling out the the grant application was the fantastic idea of incorporating Senate top there. Which also got great feedback from business people I spoke to. Uh I guess the question here tonight is, are we willing to to commit to spending? Excuse me, whatever we need to do to to get the grant.
Yeah. Sounds good. Obviously, it's a.
What is it total?
Well, uh. Guess on page one four or uh basically. Total cost upset a hundred and fifty thousand unless otherwise directed, but uh there's no recommendation on this obviously at this time. Um. Uh yeah, sounds good. I mean, I think this will be something that probably is something that gets discussed at the budget when we get to budget costs later on, but or is it?
Uh I would say to you, Karen, I would prefer we have some uh some discussion uh this evening just to kind of get a. A few examples. I think the the last thing we would want to do is is prepare and in an application uh because. It 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 turns toward around that to 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 go to that whole, uh but I think if there's if there's general support, I I I would have a level of confidence in. Uh a little yet submitted project in and around that fifty thousand, which thirty percent of that.
Okay, so it's good. Um. Deputy, do you have anything?
Yeah.
So max application is two fifty or that's the max grant?
Uh I will, I I believe the max is that they pay thirty percent.
So their portion would be two fifty, so the max you'd put in is like nine hundred K?
So the 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 max total project is two hundred K.
Up to thirty percent of.
Because they they because it's for um smaller capital. But smaller, minor.
So my 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 uh work is is are we too small, right? Like, because. Fifty K and then going to thirty percent of fifty K is not really like, do they give out grants that small?
Uh through that, that's through the through the chair. Um. Yes, they do. We said we 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 ended up with the uh phase one of the uh of waterfront trail. The out of ocean, it was in the realm, I I think it was like sixty was our total.
So.
Yes, I think I I think I think we ended up with seventeen thousand.
Oh, okay. So that although we got, that that was the gravel portion, right?
Yes. Yes, so sorry.
The ground, that's why we did partial gravel portion, right?
Correct. We did we we did we did because. And that's with 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 respect to the uh to the to that. And and I think that the feeling is that we would go a little bit smaller kind of signaling that this was phase one of the. Multi-year task where where we would have a little bit more time to prepare a more wholesome uh. Application.
Well, I certainly support fun like applying for a red. I mean, the the fact that the red grant's available again and they made a big deal of it on uh. At Roma that it would be available. You know, I I think every time a rural economic development grant comes available, we should be applying for it. I just want to make sure that we do. The best application that we can to be successful for it is, you know, making that dollar stretch out by thirty percent. It's great. I think the work that's gone on um. Yeah, we're talking about the whole project, right? We're talking about the canal beautification, right? So I can talk about that. Yeah, I think the work that's gone on then at at that area is fantastic. I think it's. It's been long overdue. My concern is um is more from a a, you know, now that it's beginning to get cleaned up. Um are we going to continue to focus on that and and maintain it to whatever standard? It ends up after it has been cleaned up or are we gonna, you know, the stumps are still there? The stump's going to disappear or. Because in the spring, they're Manitoba maples. They're just going to start visiting again. So just kind of curious what the long. The long game of that looks like. I think the initial part of it looks fantastic, but you know, by the end of next year, we're going back if we don't maintain, so.
Yes, uh through the chair, with respect to that, that was that was one of the discussions that we had with with colored and sanitation when we when we had onsite meeting. With respect to uh do we do do we look at trying to pull those out? What like what do we do? Uh and the feeling was that uh you you would leave the stumps and uh. Through sanitation, they have a little bit of that they have a. For a lot of veteran technician that they would actually come and uh inject uh into the stump that would actually. Basically kill the stump and it can actually decompose. So that that that's part of the activity that we're looking to do to uh. Sort of eliminate and prevent that from happening, so that we can better maintain it. Think that, you know, the initial feeling was okay, we 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 done that and then rep uh rep rep those stumps every so that they they don't go back and it was like. You don't really want to do that because then then you you have the potential of. Of the one incident, so we're we're better than that, I think.
Okay, I I echo, you know, um um. Councilor Martel, I I think every little bit of cleanup that has, you know, I mean, staff. Uh over the years that I've been involved has done the best they can in the budgets that they provided me. And and I think that they do a good job. You can see that in, you know, the upper part of of the canal um that was once a jungle that that now people utilize and park there. Uh and utilize those walkways and those paths all the time. Um the residents that were here and showed showed us a picture um of all of the people ice fishing in behind their homes. You know, I know we were here to do hunting, but all I could see were were how many cars were parked there and how many people were actually out on the ice. And I think that that's fantastic. And the more we continue to do little things like this, little projects like this that show that we're moving that needle forward and we're paying attention to it instead of neglecting them. Uh is good. So whatever we're applying for, I mean, it's for.
That's good. Well, I'm the only person here, I think, and I definitely in favor of doing it again. When I was a child, it was probably the only thing anybody ever seen.
And and I mean, I I think I have what I say, but that was as well. I mean, I'm a lot less concerned if it's a fifty thousand dollars times seventy percent versus two hundred fifty thousand dollars times seventy percent because it's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars difference, which. If Sean were here, I think I hear that's two percent tax increase, so I don't want to have that, but uh uh no, the the fifty thousand dollar ask for me sounds good as well. So I guess that gives you some direction on where to go.
Thank you, Mr. Jeff. I I I think the sense that there would be support very much to put that application together as part of phase one. Part of that is secondly, that there there'll be more to come and and sort of put that project on the map. So that if there is something of funding available.
And we get an annual.
Be a little closer to having the shelf ready.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, an annual subscription or something to the red program.
It's.
Uh yeah, can it's uh sorry, deputy.
Yes, the fifty thousand that we total project up. That were were, I guess, giving you guys go ahead. Is that part of the uh twelve thousand from the from the sanitation tube? Would that come off of that or is that fifty plus the twelve? Which would be sixty two.
Um the the thought process was that the the fifty thousand would be specific to that uh. Right grant in in twelve thousand would be would would be.
So we're looking at sixty two then.
Potentially.
It is.
Now I understand why, why you wanna do that study, but. It's not like a hundred percent must be done, a stability thing, I just. We've got two options, we're gonna get there, A, they're gonna come back and say, keep doing what you're doing, keep people off the rocks, put some signs up. Or B, worst case scenario, this is gonna be caved in. I just see it as, you know, that's twelve thousand dollars, it makes it sixty two thousand that we can spend on the actual site, then. I, I, maybe it's just me, but. Twelve grand will rip it up and throw it in the canal, it's not gonna get us anywhere.
I just wanna make sure.
I, I would say with high levels of confidence in the tech ball counting in the wild stream. Uh, because one, one of the items that I was done with the original study was done. And no mechanism to measure to see if it had been moved. The analysis done uh, and, and, and a mechanism to, to be able to track and monitor. What you might find is that there's been no movement at all. And, and, and that provides a level of confidence as you improve that area, I mean, you see more people within and around that area. That you have that added comfort that. The, 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 the stones are, are, are relatively stable. Yeah, we're going to, to, to put some signs up with respect to, you know, the joint risk and so, some, some items like that. They, I really, I really think, so I'm not doing that, we're really missing uh. A risk mitigation. My, my, my sense for our meeting was that it's not that. Uh, thing that. The sign is falling, it's just more, more or less like, hey, can we, can we find a mechanism that we can actually. Easily and can cost effectively monitor this and have a level of comfort.
Yeah.
That we're not doing, that we're not, we're not putting anybody in.
Okay, so, and, and just, right, so this is the kind of thing that we would do. You know, plan a schedule, do the five years down, or ten years down, or something as well, if that was the case.
I, and, and I would, like, I would probably see it as. For the first couple of years, you might wanna do it in the late to get, to, to sort of get that chart going. And then I think if there's not, if there's, if there's really no difference, right, then you, then, then you start it off. There were like, you're three years from now, but I think you have, I, I, I think you need to have some additional protection.
Okay, good question, Mr. Chair, if I may, um, will that study? I mean, to me, a lot of the problem with the north side rocks, we're not, I don't think anybody's talking about the north side, I think they're all talking about the south side, but the. The north side rocks, a lot of the instability is in the areas of where there's. And will the study, will the study give us information in regard to that, to that drainage? And will the United Counties be part of that discussion? Because it's drainage from their highway. That's causing the instability in some of those, those areas, and they really should be part of this discussion.
So through, so, so through the chair, uh, the, the focus of this, um. Particular uh, assessment is in the, in that sort of area where we're talking about making, making those improvements. And, and what I really wanted to see was how. How, how, how that unfolded in, 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 in from a cost analysis, so that we could look at, uh. You know, approaching the area and have, have a sort of level of effort with respect to that, to do some of those uh. Assessments in, in those areas where we have those uh, every, every last goals.
And so when we do this, and I'm fully in support of this, I think it's ultimately, it's money well spent, especially for the drainage side of the north, on the north portion of it. Will, will I assume that, that we'll be sharing all of that information with Mr. Kester and Mr. Gallery and. And, you know, making sure that they understand, they understand that the study's been done and the costs associated with it. And that we will be looking for a partner for some of that in the future?
So through this, so through the chair, for, for sure, we, we, we will certainly provide what, what work we did on. On, on that south side, and then, and we, we would have a good idea of what that. Uh, cost associated with that assessment uh, on, on the other side. For, for, for the county to be certain partner like that.
That comes from it up, through, through the chair and the CEO, just to clarify, the study we're talking about is only on the set aside in the area that we're talking about. For machine. Right, so it's not gonna talk to the north side at all.
That's, that's okay, I think indicating to them that they understand that we're committed to the area. And that they're responsible for a lot of the work that's gonna need to be done in the north side, they're, they're gonna get a bill for it. I think that that's.
So let's take that conversation step further, maybe instead of just doing that set aside, we should. Do anything at all, now that they, hey, we did all this. Can, can we have some funds for the, for the north side from the counties, that's Mr. Chair of that one? And then we've got the west end of the canal also has.
So, so I think, uh, uh, through, through the chair. I, uh. I would prefer to start a little smaller and a little, a little focus to give an idea on that. And then look to, uh, look to have something more wholesome incorporated like next year, that, that provides. Uh, an opportunity so. Uh, the county would mention a little bit more for it, because I think while they're being in the north side, I think you wanna go. A good portion of that north side, when there's, where, where there are multiple bed mats, and I think you're, you're, you're looking at a much more. A much higher.
So, and, so we know when the study would be done, uh, Mr. Phil, roughly?
Um, I would say that, that. You know, with the agreement signed, I'm, I'm anticipating that last spring will happen.
So lots of time that, that.
Well, well, that, that will not impact what, what the plan is with respect to, to, to your activities. It's just, uh, a lot of it's, uh, on. I think that base, uh, starting point and then.
Okay, yes, there's no regulation, sir. Uh, no, this was more just, uh, uh, getting, because, because we're trying to apply for the, um. Well, I think you got direction already too, yeah, there's no recommendations for it, right? So your setup I have so far, you don't need anything formal from us, of this?
I, I, I think I've called it up in, in, in the respect that.
All right, uh, any other questions, improvements on this?
So will we, will we bring enough to sixty thousand at budget time?
So through the chair, within the operating side, there, there is always. Uh, money included in the operation side for, for, for.
Okay, so what are, what are we looking at roughly to bring up? Would it be under capital? Is it gonna be all operating?
Well, I, uh, through, through here, I, I, I sort of, I, I sort of looked at it as, as more than the operating, uh, as a part.
Okay. The sixty thousand incorporated in?
Well, yeah, because it, it, it's broken, it's broken, you know.
Right, fifteen, twelve, okay, good.
Here with this, okay, oh, great, if it's, if it's a operation. Counselor Spel, you've got the last words. I, I, maybe I do have one, one question, does, does our. Does the work depend on the success of, of, on this, on a successful grant?
Through the chair, uh, I would say that the, if, if we were unsuccessful with the grant. We would probably scope down the work a little bit, uh, maybe in the meaning what our value is. Right, because that upset limit, if they would, uh, for, for, for instance, be. Anticipating that thirty percent of that's covered.
Yeah, that's.
So we would, we, 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 we would adjust a, accordingly, uh, in, in that regard. But enough that we won't, it's not like we, we, we won't proceed at all, it's just that we may not proceed as. Doing as many things as we may have. That makes sense.
Yeah, no, that, that gets, I, I support that. I certainly don't wanna start, you know, watering down. The commitment we've made at the west end already and, and the Legion Way area by, by trying to chew off too much. But, but I do believe that this area certainly needs a lot of, of upkeep and, and I hope that we get a successful grant that helps get us along, along the path for it.
Good story, let's ready, I can just have one more.
Last question.
Do we go when, when, when those grants usually take proof, don't assign us a check?
Through that, through, uh, through, through the chair, I, I would anticipate, uh, that it would be. Uh, sometime in the spring when we would, we would know we were successful. And then typically what we, what we're wanting to deal with, uh, once we, we cover those expenses. And then we would, we, we would, uh, we, we would provide those expenses and. Or restore for the new investors back. We brought the, we brought the money. And then specifically, and then submit to the boss.
Thank you very much, all right, we're gonna call that one an end of that discussion now. Very much everybody for chiming in, uh, so moving on to six. Six E, I guess it is now, the new six E, uh, reaching our stakeholders through modern platforms. And this is one that was brought to us entirely by Council Martell, I believe, right? So, uh, I believe you're gonna speak to this, so.
I wasn't aware as in speaking to this, but I. Thank everyone at the stable, how many times have we said, you know, how do we get our message, how do we get our message, it's an ongoing thing. And the, the mayor had asked me to look at a couple of things, so. What I discovered in working with staff is the majority of our marketing budget now goes to. And when you look at that perspective. Nobody at this table advertised when they were, when they were trying to get this job through. We need to, to modernize, we need, we talked about, uh, you know, making some videos. Society, John, the vehicles, I've given yourself. It's just time, you know, we are working on, well, we're working on last century's platform, so. Four years behind them.
Right, I think, sorry, it, you know, but I think we've had this conversation a few times, ourselves, including as well together is. Is, is, there's lots of, there's lots of platforms and, and we don't seem to, we're, we're trying to figure out how to get to everybody essentially. So it's probably gonna be a mixed effort. But I think that's what your concern is, and you talked, you're probably talking about a few things. Um, and, and it'd be nice to see what, what, uh, uh, what, what committee decides, I guess, on, on the. Pursuing this, because I do think to your point, we've all, we've all had the, we all want to get communication, we all struggle with. You know, even I struggle with knowing that things are happening, to be honest, that's one of the things that we should be at, also perspective as well, so. Uh, thanks for that introduction, so, that being said, uh. Did you, do you have anything you wanna talk to her?
I just, you know, the other day, um, and I don't know how they did. But Ontario Hydro had an average in certain areas. And Ontario Hydro phoned everyone that they had a number, whether it be a cell or, or land. To say, your hydro's gonna be off from eight AM to eleven AM. What, how can we get something like that for if we had a water break on Dunpas? Is there, it, it, like, how's Ontario Hydro get that? They don't go through the phone line. I mean, there's gotta be some kind of.
The higher call centers.
They do?
It's not personal calls, right, like, it's a, it's, it's automated basis.
Yeah, that's right. Talking about, yeah, right, that you could say, we get a, we get a water break. Your water's gonna be off from six AM to eleven AM. Where social media, you put that on, on the website all you want, you put it on Facebook all you want, you're still gonna have people. Are gonna call us and say, hey, what's, I got no water, what happened? So is there, is there mechanism besides that, or is it, would it be expensive to do that call center? Is that how they did it?
But, and I don't think that we're gonna know it all, unless you know this already. So I think, I think that's exactly what I was saying, is I think we're, we're, we're coming up with some ideas that we can think of, that maybe could. We could look into potentially from a, from a staff perspective.
I just thought it was great, everybody knew the hydro was off. I.
I know it's gonna go off potentially before it even went off, right?
They, they.
Yep.
Phone them twice.
And they're really good about as well, you know, when, when it goes off, you know, acci- accidentally, if you will. You know, that you, you find out, like, they'll send you a text essentially as well to say the power has gone out, estimated, estimated time to reach, I think we all see this, but it's.
That's just a service that I often want to watch, because we got caught on number two highway. Where we're doing a flush or something, uh, and they say, well, what happens if people don't have internet or Facebook or whatever? And then I got to, I said, well, that's true, that's true, you know, and I know you guys, I know you guys.
We're creating a list for you guys, but I think it's like not the, we'd love to have.
Social media, crazy you guys. Just not into it.
But I, I think that's the problem that we're finding is it's going to not be, there's not gonna be one answer that's getting it.
No.
There's, there's lots of options, I mean, you know, as, as I've talked about. And I, I disagree, I think that there actually isn't, and I think that answer is a, is a, is a communications person. Right, that that's actually the problem. And, I mean, we can work, we can try to come up and spitball ideas on how we want to communicate with people. The reality is we create a communications role, communication person.
Oh, shit.
It would be their entire job of, well, first of all. I think we all, we all spoke to how important communication was to us when we, when we went and we went for counseling. Every one of us, and that, and that there was a lack of, so, but we, we have an economic development board. Right, we have St. Lawrence Economic Development Board, we have tri-municipal meetings. All of those people are in the exact same position, having the exact same discussion we're having today. Right, how do we get our word, how do we do it? And nobody wants to bite the bullet and hire their own person. We talked about it with our board, and, and the, and the inability, you know, to, to, to use communications and that part of it appropriately. I'm not, like, to me, the simple, I'm, I'm not gonna tell a communications person how to get the message. Communications person's gonna give me, us a presentation and tell us what they can do for us. And, and how they can get our message. And that doesn't necessarily need, need to be somebody on staff, that can be, we hire, we, 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 we outsource. Term, but, you know, there's, there's, there's agencies out there who do this as well.
Can, can we collaborate though?
Yeah, it's a discussion when you go to the next, uh, St. Lawrence Economic Development Board or a meeting. Or it's a discussion when we have our next, uh, three municipality that meeting. Yeah, go ahead, but the problem that we're, the problem we're seeing there though, I mean, it's, it's not a bad idea, like I said. But if we collaborate, we're, you know, how do we make sure we can also get our message? And I think that's part of, we need to have that answer as well, because. You know, if it's just getting, you know, you know, sort of, let's call it the, uh, the, the three municipalities messages, that's great, but that doesn't get us. People, you know, getting, getting the word out to things that are local to our specific township or to Paranormal or to Downers Spencerville necessarily, right? So, I, I hear what you're saying, and I don't disagree with it, I just need to make sure we also make sure that it captures what we wanna try and do, which is. You know, I, I, I care more about people knowing what's going on in our township than I do. People going, I don't know what's going on at the entire counties or, or those three areas specifically, right? So you gotta make sure we have the right, the right scope of office, so sorry, good job, but we continue. Well, that was a good long talk. And, and so, the, the thing for me, right, is, is we're not. Right, like Council Martell's brought it forward that we're doing everything through print media and we're doing it through what staff can do and social media. Like.
And it's still not enough.
Still not, you know, right, and I mean, we've talked about, um, you know, silly little. Little things from when we were kids and Dave, he'll, he'll remember this one well, but, because our fathers did it and Steve might have been the one doing it. But when there was something going on, the fire department drove around and, and they announced them in, in the communities, right? Like, even when, right, even when there was good communication, that, that doesn't exist anymore. But you run a, you run a couple of fire trucks down the street anymore and, and everybody's looking out the window and coming outside. So there are still ways to, to reach people. And we're not doing a comms role now, and while, yeah, I don't really care what's going on in leagues in the Thousand Islands, our residents, I mean. Um, they, they don't care, something in Spencerville doesn't care that there's a. Um they they don't care, something in Spencerville doesn't care that there's a water break in Cardinal either, so the the fact that it it's it it comes back to economic development, my my opinion, we're trying to draw as many people into our area and communicate out our messages.
Yeah, that's right, to communicate our message, sure, and to get the best service to our taxpayers.
Yes.
And we're not doing.
And if we started in a small way with five parks.
But we're not great.
Maybe we need, then maybe we find the the the, you know what, okay, it works a little bit. You know, it it got us a little bit of the way, but maybe it does need to be just the township and the port that does it, or maybe it just needs to be Augusta Prescott and Edwardsburg Department, that's it, but I just think yeah, I did, it's not, to me, it's not a go alone kind of proposition. Because everybody, everybody around us is going through the exact same problem we're going through. And I just think the more we work together, I mean, the better the better result we'll get, so.
I agree with both of you. I had a very astute party or walked me through his lot once and we're talking about marketing, he said, Joe, we see guys' used car under the hundred bucks, let's sell that. You see that new one? I made a thousand bucks, let's sell that. Which one does he want to sell?
Both.
So yeah, all five partners in for sure, all five guys at this table doing their own thing for sure. It's, there's no one answer, maybe the answer is a bunch of little things.
Oh, I mean, honestly, it sounds great, I mean, uh I agree with Tori, it's we should be looking at the economic with the road because everybody has to be involved, like you said, everybody's with the same problem. Uh there's, you know, there are digital signs and stuff, and like Tori said, if you see you bring out the fire truck, we had to speak over the P A to tell them to do water break. It's not weird now, well, it's working, but not efficient enough.
Tax bills aren't enough. Well, I mean, if I said I sit here knowing that, like, I, you know, there's things I don't hear about until it's too late or here, but after the fact, but you know, I I would have liked to have been to myself, and that's a different conversation, but I'm also not getting the message either sometimes, you know, from the newspaper as well, and I do read this from end to end every time it comes out, so. So it's great for us to have this conversation here, where 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 are we? So draw this, you know, to a to a conclusion where we can actually put some.
So uh say through the through through the chair, um the 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 points raised, but I think that they're they're not, they're 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 not the same thing, so and and I'll try to elaborate a little bit. My wording may not be a all the best, but uh when we're talking about hydro one notifying through an automated system of a scheduled planned outage three weeks in advance. It's easier to get the message out versus you don't see hydro one giving an advance notice of a disruption that you didn't know that was going to occur. So water break that nobody knew that was going to occur, get the message out, is 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 a different communication mechanism. And it's not going to be as effective as something that you you know well enough in advance. And I think that that's that that's some of the challenges, and I think from 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 the uh from the advertising perspective, the most of it is is done through uh print media. Number one, because there's a lot of indicators that we must do it through print media, so we 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 are we 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 are doing that. Uh but really what we're looking at is it is is more marketing of of a whole slew of activities which is different than what we've been doing. We've just been uh dipping our toes in the water as as long as it's and uh for the for the staff members that that utilize the social media framework, they're doing a great job with respect to the to to the limited time that they have, but are we reading all those areas? No. And I think that probably what what is needed is i- is is sort of a communication strategy on 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 how to get that and maybe who the who the individual is, right? It could very well be a communications uh person that shared between multiple municipalities or whatever. But I think that there just needs to be a more wholesome look on 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 us we utilize, right? Spending a lot of time updating the community calendar uh events. But if the people are onto the website or 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 signing up for notifications when when updates are being done to the community calendar that they would automatically receive, hey, check this out. New stuff's been added. It's it's very similar to the uh hydro one with notification. For for the tax, we don't require somebody to provide your phone number or email. We don't necessarily have asking to organize peoples. Phone number and email unless unless they're providing something, right? So that's that that that's a barrier, so that's a communication strategy where, you know, maybe maybe we're wanting to get more personal information available so that we can utilize some similar some of some of those items, right? And I think that that really I've got to delegate more of that ad hoc committee to 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 really come up with a plan for 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 maybe to consider that would probably what my most likely a a person more more committed to 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 that kind of communication strategy, right? Like because we 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 did notice on social media for the scheduled disruption that we knew it did in the patch to the water, right? You hand deliver to every location, well, you know, under a couple of circumstances, they don't use the front door, they use the side.
Yeah.
Right, there's a we are never going to reach everybody, and I think we're trying to do what we can with what we what we have. And it recognizes that 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 the desire from from media, you know, goes more, I think we just need to to make a strategy, I think, and really thinking of how we can sustain it so that we're not doing something for for a few months and it really looks good, and it's like, you know, not a capacity to do that if you want, right?
Yeah, so next steps, I guess, that need to figure. Any ideas on the table? We should have these next steps. I don't I don't like to just have a discussion and leave it with a you know, and follow up, plan, follow up for at least, so. Well, I think, you know, the C O was outlined, that that the need most likely for for a small committee to come up with some actual ideas and meet for the moment, we can sit and brainstorm all we want, but unless you know, there's something tangible in front of us that we can move forward, we're just going to do what we're doing, so uh to me, I I would support that. I certainly don't have the time to do it. Um but if if there was an ad hoc that was done, I would hope that it would just be uh our township, I would hope that, you know, uh maybe encompasses a member from the port, a member from Prescott, a member from Augusta, something like that, even if it's just the C O is having a discussion, but or maybe it isn't the C O's, maybe it's one person from each council, I I don't really care what the composition is. Um but it would be nice if some kid bet.
Yeah, wouldn't that be better for the tri-county? To to put on a general.
Sure, it 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 might.
You know, because I do agree with you a hundred percent, Mr. Man, that that, you know, if we if we can collaborate, maybe at least get at least happen some kind of, you know, communication company or speaker who can give us a look down at what they can offer to us and what the causes, I mean, I think with three municipalities, the better, the more the better. So as long as we give us our our service.
Yeah, I guess, Mr. C O.
Would it be helpful for the next uh committee meeting next month if we brought together just basically in terms of reference with respect to that, maybe with respect to an eventual communication strategy? That it 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 does a combination of uh of staff members of council and potentially, you know, a few we'll 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 call them uh experts in 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 that area, get something started in economy, and probably better to to look initially at our municipal and get a little bit of a framework before we go to 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 the other municipalities, because it doesn't come in scratch.
I agree.
We're 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 just going to spend it for a few long, so if you have a little bit of framework and say, we'd really love you to join in once once we've already started to establish something.
One one thing, and it's probably not for this committee, but I'm just thinking um from a uh you know, Steve goes to the economic development board of meetings, and I'm just thinking the expertise that's at those meetings, right? Not us, but I mean, like Dave Beatty, Charlie Manio, like the people, that's what those people do. Right, like they're fantastic at that, where they certainly have that that you know, that network and that mechanism, they all use somebody to do their communications for them, they'll have a wealth of expertise and a wealth of knowledge beyond what what we'll have at this table as well, so, you know. I don't know if they have a budget for it, but but I know that they have the ability, so. Uh, okay, as promised, this was going to be a big agenda, it's nine thirty now. Uh any one last person have anything to say on this before we?
So I love the idea of the ad hoc committee, and I understand what the mayor is saying, thinking bigger economically with with our municipal parties, but I don't agree with the C O, let's learn to crawl before we try to um just start with our own agenda here at C E and because our our primary goal for this table has to be power people.
Thanks, Chair. And to the chair, there 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 would be nothing that could prevent some attention based on this, you're needing to sort of say, hey, like, right, uh would you be able to join us for you know, for meeting or or pretty utilized the communication and uh bring bring that company or that that individual to the table to help us in 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 covering that.
Good, so we'll we'll discuss this one uh next month, it sounds like, next meeting. Um, okay, I'm gonna end it now at this point in time. Uh so we're there, uh so moving on to number seven then, uh increase the notices of motion, does anybody have any notes? None? Uh, yeah, okay, uh I just, it's more of an inquiry, uh if we can find out, um speaking of which, do we know when, you know, we're having a, is your next uh scheduled uh tri-county meeting to be honest? I feel like about a year since we had the last one, so. You're up to answer then.
Through 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 the chair, uh the C O's are trying to have some culmination on that.
Okay, perfect, okay, just work with them.
I was just noticing, has anyone else noticed this or it bothered them as much as bothers me, but in this agenda, we spell Edwardsburg four different ways. There's like Edwardsburg without the R, there's an Edwardsburg with the R in front of the U. Yeah, and stuff like that drives me nuts, stir around page thirty, thirty-two. We didn't change the name of the misspelling, we spelled the same.
No, what what was it, was that with respect to color in their report?
We can look into that, obviously, so, okay, uh in question period, there is nobody left in attendance, there's no questions, definitely, or anything, no? Okay, uh okay, there is no closed session number nine, so moving on to adjournment, I need a mover.
So move.
Okay, a secondary, a second by Counselors Mail, uh all in favor?
I didn't think it'd take that long, you know that?
Oh.